Okay, and for planning and commission, and thank you all for coming today. Yeah, really appreciate everyone's willingness, staff, ENZ, city council, residents, and I guess speakers, those that are here and those that are on their way for getting up this early. I know it was the last, but I appreciate most of your willingness to work this in. This was a conversation that we wanted to have before we went into our strategic planning session next Wednesday. Given a lot of things that are on our plate, a lot of things that we're looking at in terms of future of the city of Farmers Branch, we thought it was imperative to have this conversation sooner rather than later, just because it ties into so many things that we're looking at. And, you know, with that, you know, we have a few things to discuss today, something that council members have been wanting to talk about for quite some time, so we'll get it on there. So, likely, new areaism. And, you know, knowing that, that comes with the idea of the streets, which was something that was brought up a few council meetings ago, something that just, let's take a look at, let's have a high conversation. Where is Farmers Branch, where is it going, where is the growth, where is it not? And what opportunities we have to be able to change, change the landscapes of the city. With that, but with that, phones, conversations, not only in the city council, conversations with ENZ that will hold into hopefully larger conversations with the community as a whole, to get a full range, whether that's from our residents, our business community, everyone else. We want to gather that before any true decisions are made, because it does impact the long-term look and feel of our city, and what do we want that to look like. And, you know, I just got back from DC to conference of mayors. I think it's our annual meeting, and a hot button issue, you know, granted, a lot of it comes from what's going on in the federal government, but infrastructure. And a lot of the conversations centered around some of the things that we're going to be talking about today, wonderful resources that are out there, things that will be shared with city council, things that will be shared with the city manager, that office, resources and tools that we can provide to our planning department as well, to look at things that are far beyond, you know, it's not just road diets, it's having a plan for the future. Yeah, we have lanes, but we don't necessarily need to take them all the way in to be equalized, you know, with autonomous vehicles, I mean, with more well-transportation, with some of the other things that we're looking at, how do we integrate all those to be able to make our safer streets? But when you look at what a lot of other cities are doing as well, it's not just the impact on traffic and mode of transportation. It's just how are we accounting for it, just how are we making sure that, you know, we are looking at training, which is a huge application we had in this city, reasonable thing that we've looked to address, you know, that comes with buy, as well as it comes with different landscape options, that comes with things that not only beautify, but allow us to accomplish some of the things that we need to, in terms of how an environment, mental sustainability standpoint, but in terms of how are we planning for our city, different areas, for a proper measure that we don't have the problems that we've seen in the past, and we're taking care of them in a much more forward-thinking, kind of progressive way. And so, a lot of that folds into the conversation we're going to have about the comprehensive plan. I mean, when we think about the different vision studies that we have for several different areas of our city, how are we folding that into a plan together to move us forward? You know, the silo on the east side, silo on the west side of the I-35, vision study that falls into the stationary plan, and what are we doing long-term as we think about all those areas as it relates to our parks, as it relates to, you know, how are we looking at our retail restaurants, streets, you know, all that needs to come together, and we need to be able to tell a much bigger story and provide a playbook and framework for how we're going to accomplish progress, how are we going to allow houses in the future to be able to come back and review these and modify as things change, as ideas change, as, you know, different opportunities come about. And so, with that, you know, we really liked the way that it worked on the I-35 vision study, where we kicked that down to planning and zoning. Some of the conversations that we had in council is how do we give our boards and commissions more involved, how do we give them more opportunities to make an impact in the city, and I think allowing you guys to run that process to lead that, I think is another wonderful opportunity, and with the success of the I-35 vision study, here's another opportunity, you know, can we bring this down the old level, let that run, let's have some conversations, work together to bring that back up to us, because, you know, we want that advice, we want to make sure that everyone's heard, and it's not just six of us up here making all the decisions. And so, to warrant that, we kick that down to y'all, and have that framework, and, you know, I think the talent that we have at the table, there's a reason you were all selected, I think the interview process that we have implemented helped us, you know, get individuals that we feel, not only capable, but willing to help lead, lead the city, and look for those opportunities based on your skill section backgrounds, you know, what you bring to the table as a collective unit is impressive, and so, you know, this is where it's another opportunity to see how this plays out. And this is a, this is a big thing for the city, I mean, this isn't going to be done in a month. This is, you know, it will take some time, and for something that is potentially this impactful, it should take some time. And so, you know, it's not just here at the table, and what we want is, which is the future residents, the Farmers Branch one, the future kids, because, you know, these changes that we're making are very, very long lasting. A lot of the city that was built out was built while I was one or two years old. And so, you know, watching it grow and change, and as we look for different opportunities to watch it grow and change, you know, you've got to think about that as I sit here, you know, 38 years later. You know, just kind of amazed and proud of what this city's become and where it's going. So, I just want to say thank you again for getting up this early, trying to figure out how to turn your brains on this early, as we go through a lot of this stuff. But with that, I will say, let's do what we normally do in the city, and I know we do have some residents here, and with all these council meetings have changed over, so just some quick introductions. The broad guy, mayor, you know, put my luck and work my way around, and then I'll be able to Mr. Moore, and then Charles has another few remarks.
Good morning, my name is Chris Larrasana, Mayor Pro Tem. Tracy Williams, council member for District 3.
Michael Driscoll, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, District 2, the one in the middle.
I'm David Merritt, council member for District 5.
Terry Land, District 4.
Charles Stock, City Manager.
John Ray, Deputy City Manager.
Ben Lee, Assistant City Manager.
Kevin Law, Lieutenant, City Attorney.
Truppa, Senator, Director. Allison Cook, Director of Economic Development.
Marcus Villa, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good morning, my name is Roger Neal, Planning and Zoning.
I'm Charlotte, Planning and Zoning.
Danny Jones, Planning and Zoning.
Amber Ridley, Planning and Zoning.
Pat Bird, Planning and Zoning.
Linda Bernal, Planning and Zoning.
and Giovanni Zavala, Planning and Zoning.
Dave Moore, Planning and Zoning Chair.
Chris Wood, Planning and Zoning, or Senior Planner with the planning department.
Good morning, everybody, David Hale, Police Chief.
Brian Campbell, Senior Plant Technician with the planning department. Good morning.
Renee Essens, I'm the Special Projects Manager with Sustainability and Public Health.
Alex, Sustainability.
So, Chairman Moore, do you have any comments you want to make for this trust? Um, I just think it's important that I say that a lot of this, the city was being built when I was running too. Now, I just appreciate everyone coming, and I think it's a really important topic that we've talked about in previous joint meetings and individually that come up at different times, and I know the planning and zoning commission decided to be here, and is open to doing whatever the council directs us to do. So, we were thrilled to get the I-35 order study put in our class, and, you know, staff did a great job, the consultants that were hired were fantastic, and it did take time, but the end product is one of the best we've actually, so I'm hopeful that we follow that same kind of pattern. So, excited to talk about accessible housing, and all the things under new, as well as the comprehensive plan, so we are, we're excited to be here.
Mr. Stock. Oh, I feel the comments previously made, that I, that y'all are here on an 8:00 AM meeting on Saturday morning. I will tell you, I've been here close to 30 years, many of you in this room have been here longer, for a long time, and by earlier in the city, there wasn't a lot of change. It was kind of the same, in a very good way, but it was the same. And one thing that we all witnessed is the change. A lot had to do with the rezoning of my side, so that now we have a lot more residents over there, folks that don't know us, that we've not really had a lot of opportunities to build trust with, and so that's a challenge. Just being a, you know, a rapidly growing city, regardless of where you look at what our population is, because there's some estimates that we're over 50,000, the census came in, in the mid-30s, I would tend to think we're probably closer to the 50,000 mark, but regardless, we're, we're growing quickly and rapidly, and we're in first ring suburb, in a, one of the fastest-growing metropolitan areas in Texas, in a state, Texas that is growing more rapidly than virtually every other state. So, it's an exciting time, it's also a challenging time. I know many of you have heard concerns from residents, they're concerned about change. There's some that, hey, you can't change fast enough. And so, this dialogue, I think, is really going to help, kind of help direct that change to the best of our ability, and also realize that we have now residents, old and young, that have different demands, and how best to meet the demands of all, and make sure that we are providing quality services and quality direction for growth in the future. So, I'm excited about today, and I think there's going to be, my hope is everyone has an open mind, just to think about, hey, some of these are just concepts that are going to be put out there to think about, that doesn't mean we'll actually implement any of them, or we can implement all of them, but, you know, it's just, what are we, what can we do to help direct where we're going in the future, and this is that opportunity. So, thank y'all for being part of that. As you can see, that, the housing diversity, we're skipping a little bit, the speaker situation, but skipping down one item, we'll start with housing diversity, if that's okay. Sam, we're prepared to start here.
So, do you want us to do like two minutes, or do you want us to start with the housing diversity?
Is there a parking lot?
Yes, we can do the housing diversity right now.
Yeah, let's, let's start with that. Let's get in, so.
Good morning, everyone, and I'm Truppa, Senator, Director. Thank you so much.
Hard to hear you. Speak up.
Do they have a microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I've got this one.
Is that?
Sorry for the delay. So, the topic that we are first going to talk about is housing diversity. And I found trading for the presentation, as you know, here, my daughter, one of our consulting planner, she did some of the work under the foundation, please hope her finds you in. So, the bullet point of this presentation overall, the broad topic of housing diversity, we're going to focus on what is housing affordability and attainability, why Farmers Branch, what is Farmers Branch doing now in terms of housing attainability, and other tools that are out there that we can take a look at, and then we'll have discussion on the topic. So, just in a brief overview, what is housing affordability versus attainability? The rule of thumb, as we know, is housing should not cost for more than 30% of your gross household income. And when we are talking about attainable housing versus affordable housing, sometimes gets a little confusing. With attainable housing, what we are talking about is where it's for the missing middle housing that we commonly refer to, where the 30% of your income should work out towards the 89,000 AMI, a range of about $17,000 to $2,760 per month for your housing cost, and that includes utilities. So, it's, the difference between affordable and attainable is affordable is for also subsidized housing, and for income groups that are also sometimes below the poverty level. So, we are focusing this discussion today on attainable housing, how to address the missing middle group of housing sector. If you look at the graphic on the right side of your slide, it shows the trend over the past eight years, or from 2010 to 2018, you will see that the income potential for households have not increased at the same rate as the housing cost or the rent price has increased for homeowners. So, you can see that first bar, that's a 41% raise in median home price over the eight-year period. The second arrow is the median rent, that rose about 34%, whereas the median income only rose by 9%. So, how do people keep up with this rising price if their income is not keeping up with the rising housing cost? The question we have to ask ourselves is, as a community, as a group of residents, as Farmers Branch, what do we desire for the city? As Mayor has been talking about, that going 20, 30 years into the future, what are we really desiring for this community? Do we want that social responsibility, equitability? Do we want to provide choices for our residents where we can age in place, where our kids, when they graduate from college, they can come back and potentially buy a new home and start their family here? Do we want to provide those choices for the years to come? Also, the second question we have to ask ourselves, when we looked at other area cities, does every city have to have attainable housing, or have to address that question, or that policy question? Because sometimes when you look at neighboring cities, for example Dallas, they're much bigger than us, they have much larger resources, staff resources, and they have a comprehensive housing policy. But when you look at cities like ours, Farmers Branch with the similar population size, usually those cities do not have a comprehensive housing policy, given the reason of restriction of resources, and staff power, and manpower. So, we also have to ask ourselves the question, when you look at the whole GFW market, and when you look at the location for Farmers Branch, do we have attainable housing within the city, as well as in the surrounding neighborhoods? And do we understand that question for our future, that we want attainable housing, or we are comfortable with the programs that we have right now? And that leads us to the second part of this presentation, which is what we are doing now, in terms of providing housing options, housing choices, how are we helping our current residents and future residents? For example, this is where I'll transition to Allison Cook, where she can talk about some of our current programs that we have.
Okay, many of you have seen this map before. This is the single-family improvement value map. This does not include land values, so land values will not part of this, and this is also not the price you sell your house for. This is the Dallas County appraisal district price of a home, not a piece of land, in Farmers Branch. So, we took the improvement values, and as you see, we have a pie chart, counts, and the values. We have majority, 50.1%, is between $100,000 and $200,000 improvement value. So, I think it's really important to know, who are we, through our data? So, this is map one, not a lot of maps. And we pulled four for-sale houses that kind of fit 30% of AMI. Truppa went into what AMI is, area median income, just to kind of show you what affordable housing we already have, or attainable, what we have right now. So, this is a townhome, it's very small, it's 1,100 a month. Another townhome, two-bedroom, 1,459 a month. Asking price, 295, three-bedroom, one bath, 1,228 square feet, 1,643 a month. And then we have a 367,000, slightly dermoded, single-family home that is on the market right now, it's 1,933 square feet. So, we have a little bit for everybody, it's a good way to think it through. Okay, I pulled this map, these are actual sold, these are not the for-sale right now, these are actual recorded prices on MLS, the multiple listing service. And I broke out Farmers Branch Central Area from our west side, because they're distinctly different product. Central Area's been built out for a couple decades, west side is brand-new. So, when you look at the sold homes in the past 90 to 120 days, from the time I ran this report, Farmers Branch average sold is 334,266,000. And then you go up from Irving, Richardson, Carrollton, I did the total, if you want to take west and central together, we have Addison, Capel, and then our west side. So, this kind of shows you, we really have a lot of attainable housing right now. We are trending, just like every other city, I broke out other cities too, even Dallas, and they're all from January 2012 to January 2021. It's important to see trends with data, and the trend is tricking up at the same rate, so nothing unusual's going on in Farmers Branch. We hear people say, I just can't believe it's hard to find a house, or home sales are soaring, well, it's a collective situation. This is a for-sale and for-rent map, just so you can see, there's product on the ground right now, that you can rent, and that one can buy, in Farmers Branch, kind of shows you where all that is. And then I just did average for rent, so if one wanted to rent here, there's nine rental properties, as of the date I ran this, average square foot, and then average monthly rent, and that's a gross number. Okay, for rent multifamily, this is all the existing multifamily, this is not proposed multifamily to come on the market, and this is not senior living deed restricted, so this is all the multifamily that you can go right now and rent. 28 properties, and you can see average one, two, three bedrooms, and the different prices from 1,477 to 2,266. I pulled the occupancy rate and the market rental rate, because I think it's an important story, and where you see a big dip, that's when a new building comes online, and so they say, okay, they report, we have 247 units and none are leased, because they just brought it to the market, so you see a dip, and then the second they lease up, in a month or so. So, that's when you see sharp dips in your occupancy for really any product sector, that's what the dip is usually. We didn't have 1,000 people vacate in a short amount of time. So, you can see the market rent per unit is going up, but it's more of an incremental between 83% and 92%. Neighborhood Renaissance program, okay. So, we've had a Neighborhood Renaissance program that we've talked about for years across the whole city, we had a bond, and the bond allowed staff to go and buy more dilapidated properties and tear them down, when we would hear about a home that had a situation or whatnot, across the entire city. And then as we started to gather inventory in one particular pocket, we wanted to make sure that we were not gentrifying that pocket. And so, right now, for today, we're going to talk about what we call a target area, which is north of Valley View, west of Josie. So, just in that target area, we have 15 lots that we've purchased, and we are, we are now authorized, as of early January, to have five new homes built through Builders of Hope, nonprofit, I mean, they make some profits. So, they're home builders, basically, and we just wanted to control the square footage that was going to go back in, instead of putting a two-story McMansion in a neighborhood that might not fit that, we were, we're putting one-story homes back in, in just five. So, it is an interesting program, we were asking for deep front porches, and two-car garages, and things of that nature. So, again, the target market is the attainable housing market between 80 and 120% of AMI, you could be making $70,000, $80,000 in you fall in that range. And Builders of Hope is the one that qualifies you and does the intake. City Hall's not selling houses and dealing with any of that. And the first sale product will be under 379,000, and under 2,100 square feet. Here's a map, please ignore the east side of Josie, so here's a map, this is the main street, this is Josie, this is Josie. Valley View's down here, so this is essentially what we're talking about, some of these lots. We're trying to put thoughtful product back into our target area, as best we can.
Amy, what's the current square footage of these in that area?
The lot size, about 60 by 120s.
What are the pins versus the circular?
It's just how I chose, I don't, there's no difference. That's how I felt that day. Metrocrest Services, they have a home rehabilitation program, and if someone is having a hard time keeping up at their home, a resident can go to Metrocrest Services and see if they qualify for some of their assistance, and that's not the target area building program we're talking about, I'm transitioning to something completely different. So, if you hear of something, somebody that's needing some help, either with accessibility issues, like a ramp, or age-in-place issues, Metrocrest Services is somebody that you can call and see if maybe they can help. Councilman Lynn.
Hey, I see some people sitting outside, is there any way we can sort of squeeze in so they can come in?
Sure, let's see.
The sale price, 379,000?
Yes.
Is that just projecting the future, when this house will be done? That you're projecting the market rate of that house, that's the market number?
Thank you for the question, no, that's an actual contractual number, so we are the owner of the lot, and we're selling to a builder, and we have capped him at that price, just for our five lots, for the one-story smaller product, because some of them are 1,700, some of them are 1,900, so they're all capped at a certain number. The highest number, the 2,100 square foot home, is 379,000, and that's contractual, he can't sell above that.
So, if it comes on the market, and that's like $30,000 below the current market value, is there going to be like a rush?
Great question, so it's deed restricted for seven years, and so the way we see it is, there was a grant applied to that sale, and so for seven years, that person cannot sell above $379,000. Now, if they do, they owe me the money back. So, you can't flip on us.
And Builders of Hope is vetting the applicants to?
Correct, they do all the intake, so to speak, they make sure, they ask for your tax returns, what do you do, what's your employment, and things of that nature. And so, it is not affordable housing, people have called and asked me that question, it's not affordable housing, it is what we would call attainable housing, in that middle market. So, if you're a teacher or firefighter, you're going to fit into that 80 to 120% of AMI. I don't find another city doing 80 to 120% of AMI, everyone does below it. But they're different than Farmers Branch, they have different issues than we do.
And they're qualified for those conventional mortgages?
It's a different situation, so when an applicant comes and they're vetted out, the Builders of Hope has a partnership with Dallas County, and Dallas County has grants that they can walk into if they apply, so they could get some money off of their down payment assistance program. But, so they could walk in with some instant equity, but they have to have a job and employment, and they have to be able to carry the mortgage.
Really the goal, really the goal of this program, and this is in my district, and one of the things I've heard over the years is, you know, we have people we went to school with that cannot afford to come back to the city where they grew up, because, you know, they want to come back because they're, you know, they're generational, they want to be close to their family, and this is an opportunity for us to allow for, or have opportunity for those that want to come back to Farmers Branch, that grew up here, that are in that missing middle, to be able to live near their family, and want to raise their kids here because they, you know, grew up here, and they enjoyed being in the city for their childhood. And really, the, this is very innovative, talking to other colleagues in other cities, they, they're looking to see how we do it, to potentially do it there, for example Irving. And one of the things that I think is also really unique in that, there is that ability, like you mentioned, to be able to apply for some of these grants, that, that wouldn't be able to, you know, otherwise, because of this program, because there has to be a program attached to some of these grants. And the, the beauty of it is that we control what it looks like, because one of the things that I've heard also, there is a mini mansion in this neighborhood that everybody hates, because it doesn't, it doesn't go with the character of the neighborhood, they see it as an eyesore, even though it is a, you know, $600,000 home, because they, they want to preserve the, the character of the neighborhood, and that's one of the things we want to make sure to keep in certain neighborhoods, because they aren't different. they aren't different. We can't, you know, we can't do this in other areas. This is a very unique, unique target area. But we also don't, can't do what we're doing in, let's say, you know, south of Valley View, because that just doesn't make sense based on the, the neighborhood in itself. So there has been a lot of discussion asking about, well, you know, they're trying to do what you're doing, you know, and, and, you know, take us out of our neighborhood. That's not the case. We want people to, our hope is to create this ripple effect where they see that they have a brand new home across the street, they may want it because a lot of this housing stock is very, very old. And seeing that there's a new home that they can potentially build, maybe move into, and then they create this ripple effect to create new similar housing in areas that our, our families can afford. Because we do see multi-generational families in this neighborhood because the Latina, they're, that's just what we do, is it's in our nature, it's in our culture. And so, and that's not going to change. So how can we, as a city, be sure to just be more equitable when it comes to what we offer throughout our city in different pockets? If it's not going to work everywhere, it is the unique opportunity that we saw. And Builders of Hope is a very good nonprofit that actually able to, is able to do something like this. Sorry, Andy, do you have a question?
So...
Mr. Jensen.
So putting your economic development hat on for a second, is there any plan to study since they've kind of, you know, seven years you can't sell over the price, so okay, I'll live here for seven years and try and sell over the price. Is there any plan to study that these, these families, this group of families' economic impact in the community? Because what I'm picturing, my brother-in-law, he's a state trooper, he'll fit into this category. He brings his four kids and his wife, and suddenly we're buying cars and going to school and doing all that dance.
Yeah.
Is there a plan to study that impact to see what benefit this project gives to the city overall, tax revenue lies, health relies, the sort of thing?
Yes. So once they close on that property and we know that exact sales price, we can write that second, we can do it now, apply the city tax rates. If we're just looking at the city jurisdiction, so we know exactly what it is that they bring to the tax rolls. This is not a program where we're saying, we need as much money as taxable value. But we don't control D-CAD, we don't control how they value homes. So there will be an impact through property taxes. There will also be a regional impact multiplier of a family coming in and they're going to shop at a grocery store.
Yeah, that part. Because I know I can go on D-CAD, that's what I'm talking about. Are we studying the overall economic impact or asking what will ultimately be fifteen families to admit in this case?
Actually, there is another point I think we need to clarify. We are going to target market these homes to Farmers Branch residents, current residents. Just start.
If three people are talking, I'd ask a bad question.
There's, there's kind of two, two things presented here.
Yeah.
And, and one is, as Councilwoman Rukana mentioned, is, you know, there's, there are, this particular neighborhood, North of Valley View, is just a number of families, multi-generational families that have been there for a long time. The house has been paid off a long time ago. But, and the land, quite frankly, is worth a whole lot more than, but they originally had way more than they were to pay for it. But they're sitting on land that is very valuable. And so the hope here, just kind of like the, the branch crossing, you know, that, that was a Renaissance program as well, that, that had different goals and objectives, and I think was very, very successful. But this is a little bit of a twist here. The hope here is to say, and we have, I think, fifteen homes, we're, we're doing this pilot program with five. But the hope is to say, okay, for the first, we'll pick a period of time, say a month or two, it will just be marketed to the folks within the neighborhood, to provide an opportunity for somebody that may have been there a long time, and they want to move up to a little bit nicer house in the same neighborhood. And they now have, say, two hundred thousand dollars' worth of equity in the land alone that they can sell maybe to us. Because we're helping, we're helping that we get them all rolling, and then we can exit and let the community and neighborhood go on its own like we did with Branch Crossing. Just, we just want to provide that spark. But the hope is to provide existing families to move up, have a huge down payment toward the new house. And then we can take the old house that they've sold to us and kind of exponentially move this along. So that's the, the hope with existing families. And so it's going to have that exponential impact that you're talking about. And then secondarily, you know, once, once that marketing plan is over, the next step would be to market towards maybe first-time home buyers, that kind of thing, the workforce.
Then there's a plan to do the market study, see the overall economic impact of this plan, not just on the tax rolls, but on the, the economy of the whole.
It will have to be at the end, but yes, we can see that.
Andy, one of the things that's, one of the goals of the program is going to be harder to measure, is one of the things that we're hearing is it's getting harder and harder for people that serve this community to live in this community. I talked to a ton of teachers. I teach at Farmers Branch Elementary. I can't afford, my commute is getting, so far, I can't continue to teach here. There's going to be a point where we have folks that, that serve our kids and our community. We have firefighters that drive in from Oklahoma. And at some point, communities are going to have to get together and say, you have to be able to afford to live in the communities that you serve.
Right.
So that's harder to measure, but we don't want to get to a point where there's an epidemic where we can't find teachers or, you know, police and firefighters to give communities because they can't afford to live in the communities they serve. That's harder to measure, but it's certainly important.
I'll just add to what John had to say. In these issues, like you said, identification, the biggest issue is displacement of communities because we want to retain that community fabric and people have been here and are really invested in making this a great place. But everyone also wants a nice place to live. So this accomplishes both. Some people in the research literature call this like a generalization. Because what you're doing is helping people make improvements to the, the fabric of their community in infrastructure and housing quality without displacement. And so it is a, is, is a situation where those existing residents should be a part of building of the community that they want to see.
Right, right.
So if we're modeling this after branch crossing, though, is that really, I mean, that's sort of what I heard was that that's how the branch crossing started. And so the intent is for the city to be involved for fifteen lots or thirty lots, and then it, it becomes driven by the market? And, and, because branch crossing is certainly an example of identification at this point. We're not having attainable housing or affordable housing in branch crossing.
Yeah. And I don't think the goal for branch crossing was to hit a certain metric of a middle number. It was just free-market stuff, right? And it was a catalyst project. So I think the representation from branch crossing here is new products on the ground, but it's got to be a one-story new product, and we can control the end price because we control the lot.
As long as the city stays involved. And at some point, when it is driven by the neighborhood, I mean, there's no more control.
Yeah, we control fifteen. And then at the same time, we touched a little bit on Builders of Hope can run a concurrent program for just this target area. It's not open up to all DFW. If you own a house there and you feel like you can't maintain it and you want to do a deal with them, you can, they can build on your lot and y'all do the deal together. Because they have all the vendors that meet the criteria for this budget for home. So that's a possibility for people in the cities not involved at all.
So, and you can deed restrict things that the city purchases and...
And that's it.
And, and so when you talk about like two houses on either side of you have been done in this Neighborhood Renaissance Program, there's nothing to stop an individual buyer from purchasing a property for sale, tearing it down, and building a big mansion.
There's nothing to stop, but you do have a recorded sale on MLS of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a neighbor. So we will record all the sales.
Sure. And that's above market value currently, right?
Not for a new product over there.
Right, right, an existing product. And so...
For remodeled or older. So there's no brand-new one-story product right now in target area.
And one thing too that we talked about was there has to be an education component. And I think that's where, that's where, and to answer your question, the educational component is to let folks know that there is now, there's a city program, right? Because we're buying a lot. But there's now a builder that has access to grants and funds that others may not have access to, that they cannot apply for based on how much you make, that others may not be able to do. And so the goal is that concurrent program is for folks to be able to say, hey, there's, there's now this unique builder that is focusing on Farmers Branch that can do something and can help us with down payments and whatnot that nobody else can do. So they can start doing that on their own. Because there, I've talked to folks and a lot of them are, you know, been here because you can't afford living anywhere else. If you move, where else are we going to go? Or you have to move to like, you know, Salina, and that's even, you know, costing a lot of money. But now there's an opportunity, and as I've been talking to the people, it's like, oh, okay, that makes, that makes sense. My daughter's been living with me and wants to find a home. She's eligible, she grew up here. But there is to be that educational component that I think we're going to, we as a community are going to need to ensure that we, that we have with, with this particular area, just so they know what the options are. Because as soon as people got with it, they, they thought branch crossing, and that's not what we're trying to do. But as, as they start seeing the ripple effect, that's our hope. You know, we'll, we'll, you know, for me, this is something that I think we need to monitor, so, so make sure that it doesn't become that. Because that, that's one of the issues that I think a lot of folks are scared of, is it's being gentrified outside of the city where, where their kids grew up, where, where they plan on retiring. And I think that's something that we, as a staff, as council, are going to need to monitor, to, to see what other innovative opportunities we have to, to ensure that hopefully that doesn't happen. Because that is the case, it can. And in the next ten years, to your point, if we don't keep buying the lots, then, then that, that can happen. Because it's not restricted by number of stories in this area or things like that. But if we educate them to say, you can sell the city or a lot, and then you can move into this new home, then that's a different conversation. But I, I agree with you, wanting to definitely monitor it, to make sure that, that doesn't happen here. Because as soon as people start seeing brand-new homes, they're like, oh, it's changing, I want to move there, I want to build my McMansion, and that's not what we're trying to do.
So the, the buyer qualification, is it only current city Farmers Branch residents?
Okay, let me be clear, we're not going to violate any fair housing laws. Kevin's sweating. So I still want to push back. So it's, it's just regular real estate, but we're going to do a soft marketing, and I'm not going to put it on MLS for the first thirty, sixty days. And we're going to do soft marketing to the neighborhood and the communities. So that's just how we can control it. But anybody's allowed to purchase it, you know, once it's on an MLS and make an offer.
And those have to meet the other qualifications.
Yeah, they still have to...
Right. Those are going to do the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent verification and all that.
One hundred percent, yeah.
The concept, the concept, as Allison said, is to market, market, target Farmers Branch residents first, and to the extent we have enough applications, prioritize them, you know, in the application process, as far as you get the opportunity to do this. But I, I think it's, it's probably a little, to say we can only do Farmers Branch residents, I think we've got a little fair housing issue to make, make...
Is the other part of the targeting maybe that, that firefighter or the teacher that serves Farmers Branch maybe in that, that first cohort as well?
If, if to the extent that we can.
Yeah, to the extent that we can.
And one thing too that we advise builders is it's probably better to use realtors that are from the area, that understand the area. We have quite a few. Because they're the ones that people go to directly. Because they're from here, and they know the area. And so that, that will, that's definitely going to help.
And any more questions before I move along? It's very interesting. I'm glad you're excited, involved, even if you don't like it, at least you're here.
And actually, that's a very good segue.
Yes.
For the next section.
So Shripa's going to talk to you about all the other fun stuff.
You talked about this, right? So we're both excited that everyone is interested in these new programs that are going on in the city. And I think that takes us to the next part, which is, what is the direction? Are we going to focus on what we are doing right now? Expand on those programs? Or do you feel there is a need to expand on the policy direction and ask for more program changes or flexible zoning regulations to begin with, to allow more attainable housing? So going back to that first part of the discussion is, what as a community do you desire? And that's the direction we are looking for today. Because we at the staff level, we have talked about attainable housing a lot, but we lag that direction, that where as a community we want to go moving forward. So flexible zoning regulation. Of course, we can talk about various tools that can be used where minor tweaks to your zoning requirements can make building a home in a desired design much more easy and much more cost-effective versus certain other requirements. And without getting into the weeds of each individual requirement, we're just going to give you a very easy example of your accessory dwelling units. Quite a few communities in and around the area have adopted regulations or policies where you can either rent your accessory dwelling units or provide that multi-generational housing on the same lot. So those are the things we can take a look at and see and come back to council if that's the desire, to provide some recommendations and some suggestions, that these tools can provide flexibility, reduce cost of housing, and give more options to homeowners and home buyers to expand and age-in-place and provide that lifecycle housing, if you will. The second point on your slide is the tax credit financing. Now, those, to be very clear, are subsidized, or portions of those are funded through the Texas Housing or Tax Credit, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. So they are, they're not necessarily in the attainable housing category, but more towards the affordable housing category. And they do require city council approval and support before those projects can be built in the city. So yeah, there are several options that we can look into, but the direction we are looking for is, what is the goal? What is the strategy that moving forward in addressing housing choices and housing diversity in Farmers Branch? Do you, do we develop a policy where we evaluate city's current housing stock, which we looked at that map? And on the next slide, I'll go back to that pie chart that very clearly shows what our current housing stock is. Do we evaluate our current housing stock and make that policy decision of, okay, do we have enough attainable housing? Are we doing what we are supposed to do through these programs with Builders of Hope? And we can slowly build on those programs. We can keep on funding those programs and expanding on those. Is that the right answer? And what other implementation steps we can take? How do we monitor these programs? We talked about that, that these Builders of Hope program or the Neighborhood Renaissance, how those programs are going to be successful over the years? Because we are becoming almost like a pilot program for the neighboring communities who are going to look up to us. Now, this is the chart we had seen on the first map that Allison showed us. We don't even have to put the percentage on that pie. You can see that half of it is green. That means when you are looking at improvement value and you just go back to the basic number where your housing should not account for more than thirty percent of your gross household income, that's fifty percent is that light green color. The housing improvement value is between hundred to two hundred K. So we do have our existing housing stock, yeah, they might not be brand-new houses, but our existing housing stock do have improvement values that are within the attainable range. Now, the question we have to ask ourselves, or the direction we need from council and the commission, is how do we continue or expand our current efforts? Do we want to do financially diverse and more socially responsible housing? Do we expand on these policies and programs? Or it's a range, right? One range of the spectrum is we do nothing. The other range is we do a very comprehensive housing policy. And there is also a middle point. That's the direction we are looking for, that what you feel as a community, are we there? Are we doing what we are supposed to be doing? Does the community itself and also the surrounding neighborhoods have attainable housing or have those workforce housing choices where we may not have to have a comprehensive policy like Dallas, but work on our existing programs that we have in-house? So that's all we have for you on the housing diversity presentation.
And housing diversity means different types of housing, townhome, single-family, single-family attached, detached, just to clarify.
We'll be happy to answer any question or discussion.
One thing I'll make real quick, I'm trying to, we talked about this once before when we met with you in this joint meeting, it was a number of years ago.
Right, two years ago.
A quick recap of where the direction was at that point, the direction from this group was, at that point, cities could dictate what were the public materials that we wanted. And so the outcome of that meeting was that we would start looking at geographical areas where we would potentially allow a, a less expensive exterior rather than everything we, masonry or brick. We would allow in certain areas or look at allowing certain areas to have less expensive materials so that it would drive down the cost of the construction and then drive down the cost of the housing. We started down that road, and then the state legislature preempted us, and legislation was passed that prevents the city, because we used to have a requirement, I think, seventy, seventy-five percent of construction had to be masonry. And now we can't do that. So that kind of eliminated that direction of council at the time that we could control the building materials. So that, that was the, the outcome of that last meeting. So just as a recap... So just as a recap for that, uh, for that, out of our toolbox of history.
Um, I have some questions as it pertains to the current stock that you, in the size that you sent out, Allison. Um, and the, do you think the, the per month cost is like this two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar home? At sixteen hundred dollars a month? Would you please clarify that for me, Karen? How are you calculating that, and what type of mortgage that you're...
It's going to be different for everybody.
I feel like that's pretty low.
Right.
Or, uh, the house that's bought on a conventional...
It's going to differ for everybody, but if you're making some assumptions of down payment, and, um, you're making assumption of a homestead, so this is not investment property, then you can get to that number. So we took some liberties with our calculations, but it's going to be different for everybody, whether you put ten percent down, twenty percent down, it's going to be different for everybody. So this number is going to be different for everybody. It's impossible to have really, this is exactly the number. So every, every person here might have a little bit.
So when you're talking about attainable housing, I'm assuming like your minimum down payment on a conventional one is going to be five percent? And then you're going to have TMI, and your taxes are going to be eight, seven thousand dollars a year? And your mortgage payment, I also kind of have a different number, but again, like from personal, like, anecdotal experience, like that is quite low.
And some people may have to put ten, you know, ten percent down, or fifteen percent down. So we were, we were taking it off of like Zillow and Realtor.com. They make some assumptions on those sites, and so we're taking some of their data. But again, you could put twenty percent down, you can put fifteen percent down. Everybody, uh, five percent down, I don't, I haven't seen that, but I'm sure everything's possible.
I know when we first bought, the buyer first helped, you know.
Oh, might be a first buyer.
I mean, maybe it was a first, I don't know, but it was a conventional loan, and it was, you know, at current... And it's basically similar to what they are now.
That's going to make that not the, though, not the median. You put that little amount down, he's in there and does a PMI.
Right.
And so...
But I'm saying, we're talking about attainable housing.
P M I, it's sixty dollars. I own one of those houses on the website. P M I is sixty dollars. It sucks, but it's not, it's not going to change the attainability of that house.
Yeah.
Sure.
When you're talking about attainability, I mean, you're not looking at people that have twenty...
No, no.
So twenty percent of that is sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand dollars.
And it depends how long the life of your loan is amortized. So I don't know, are you talking fifteen, twenty, thirty-year longer? So it's all going to be dependent upon your specific set of numbers with a banker. We're not trying to get in the middle of that.
Sure, and I'm just, in, in terms of kind of framing it for real-world people that are looking for attainable housing, and then you're also adding in the need to pay, to factor that thirty percent into, um, or the thirty percent needs to also factor in utilities and, um, other. It, it just seems a little...
It depends what your buy number is. It all depends what your buy number is.
Sure.
With that one negotiated price that you got that house for. It's the mag, that's the magic sauce of everything.
Sure. I mean, I understand that, and I guess I'm, I'm saying...
Yeah.
Relative to this particular...
Right.
Ask price, and assuming that that's the buy price.
It's just going to be averages, and they're going to be different for everybody. So it's impossible for me to tell you, I can give you three subsets, five, had to, or five. But, you know, is it ten percent down, fifteen percent? I don't know. We don't do that here at the city, really. We're just barely doing this pilot program.
Sure, sure.
Um, but at the end of the day, my, the chart that I was showing was, who are we? And these are sold prices, so these are real numbers. This is not what's for sale right now. We don't know if someone's going to pay it. This is what someone has paid, and so this is who you are. And so, you know, the for sales are, uh, yes, until it's sold. So these are sold past ninety to one hundred and twenty days from January tenth, when I pulled the data.
Right, and I, I guess I'm, I'm speaking to it as if, because you're talking about people that are making, what, I think ninety thousand dollars a year, eighty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, for the Builders of Hope program, it'll be a little different. So for people that are just in that pilot program, they'll have access to Dallas County grants and, um, things of that nature. So they may have access to first homebuyer, if they're a first homebuyer, and stuff of that. So they have the ability, maybe, to buy that down. So they have whatever their down payment is, and then some instant equity through grants. Now, they will have to stay in the house if they do a Dallas County grant of any kind, um, and say it's five thousand, or six thousand, or something. They'll have to stay in a house, um, for seven years as well, with a Dallas County grant program. So they not only have our deed restriction, they'll have, if they do any grants with anybody else, they will have deed restrictions for seven or ten years. Now again, they can sell, because life happens. They just have to pay the delta back.
Sure, and I, and I'm not necessarily bringing this up to talk about the, that Renaissance program, but as, as it pertains to how attainable is our housing stock actually? As you look, look at options to remediate the issue, I'm not sure that our housing, even at three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I mean, and I realize that's median, and so you've got things that are less. But like the one-bedroom apartment is not going to house your teacher and their family, because it's a one-bedroom compound, right?
It's a choice.
Sure.
It's a choice.
And I under, again, I'm, I'm speaking of these numbers mainly to point out that maybe our housing stock is not really truly attainable at this juncture, and, um...
Hey, I agree with you. I'd love to know if we know what a farmer's branch buyer or a farmer, or a farmer's branch teacher make. And if we put that number together, I mean, I mean, just know that. I, I agree with you.
I thought of that.
And I think that's where we are looking for the direction, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that what do you see? What is your direction moving forward? That are we comfortable in expanding on the programs that we have on, on ground, on paper? And invest more on those Builders of Hope programs, or Neighborhood Renaissance programs? Or are we going to look at a policy direction where you are directing us to go look at our codes and regulations? Provide options where, in an intangible way, we can reduce housing costs? Or what are other choices? Is your direction that, yes, we, we are happy with the programs, and maybe we continue to grow those programs? Or are we looking at expanding? Charles, what do you?
Who want that, and the other part, just, just keep in mind that not every city is an OSR diversity... And, and what, what Shroop had mentioned earlier is that, you know, when we're roughly, what, thirty percent residential? So we're not going to have, you know, we, it's hard for us to have a huge diversity within the city. If you look at a, a circle around us, and you start looking at just, uh, just south of LBJ, or as you start to go in Carrollton, all of a sudden, the, not just affordable, but attainable housing, no matter how you divide it, becomes very clear. And so the question is, do we have to have a little bit of each, or can we rely on what's around us? Uh, and, you know, and also, what is the market saying? Like, we're not, when employees come to work for us, we saw a lot of employees come to work and say, or that we're trying to recruit, and we're not hearing, I don't want to work with you because I can't find any housing nearby or in your city. That's not what we're hearing. Same thing for businesses, that's, that's not necessarily what we're hearing. So we're trying to, the, the question is, you know, we're asking the direction is, what, what is the goal? What are we trying to achieve? And, and we can provide you a lot of options on how to get there, just need to, to know what we're, what we're trying to achieve. And, but I will let you know, the market is, we're not hearing from the market directly, uh, that there is an issue.
Right. Correct. Yeah, when we hear from employers, they talk about drive time. So people look at it kind of a twenty-minute drive time, or whatever their threshold remain is, so.
Well, real quick, you need to add on what Charles is saying. Overall, what is the goal?
Right.
What are we trying to accomplish? And you have to remember, there are a lot of factors here at play, that play in what happened in the housing market, not only farmer's branch, but in the more access, as a whole. And, you know, the demographic study from, that's another factor. Right there. Um, said that for years, ninety percent of the people that worked in farmer's branch did not live in farmer's branch. And ninety percent of the people that live in farmer's branch work outside of farmer's branch. Like, we are a region, I mean, we're a city, we take care of them. But in terms of how we work with everyone around us, whether we're going to work, whether we're going to eat, whether we're going to play, it's not always here. It's, it's in other cities. And so, you know, it isn't the surrounding communities that help us solve our issues. But when a hundred thousand-plus people are moving here each year, and you are a first ring suburb, you are going to get that pressure on housing prices going up, because people still want to be in the middle of where everything is, because that's the accessibility of, in farmer's branch, I can get to the most amount of jobs within fifty, twenty minutes. Um, and so in terms of variables, what is it that we want to control? And what is it that we want to allow the market to just have? And I remember a conversation with my dad ten years ago, when I bought my first home here. He said, I would never get my money back out of it. The value has gone to two hundred and fifty percent since I bought that home ten years ago. I wish I could tell him about that, that investment today. Uh, but, I mean, you're seeing it across the city. And when you see home price, apparently, you know, Geo can speak to this, I mean, the price of a little home now in the last eighteen months has gone to twenty, twenty-five percent. So, you know, setting this three seventy-nine mark to a high level, I think, is a worthy goal. And, you know, to build is, you said, the Noah's Ark continuum of diversity. You know, we still need to have people that, you know, are making a little bit less. They have, you know, they don't have the same opportunities as others. I mean, I look at Roots, right, wonderful restaurant. Four of the employees, the wait tables there, live across the street, or on, in Mercer Crossing. And they like, they have a place where they can come in, you know, wonderful food, you know. You know, in terms of prices on the higher end, they're making a good income there. You know, they love that opportunity, and because it's so close, they chose to work there. They stay there, it's familiar, you know, it works. But we have provided that across our whole city, in terms of what is the workforce? We also need to count for other people that are going to salary jobs downtown, and into some of our areas of commerce. And so, you know, this program, in my opinion, I think is the first step to take a look at. Um, I think we do have some things that we, both in the city council, need to look at in terms of what goals do we want to, in certain areas, and where do we want the market just to do what it is? Because people don't want to live here. Um, and the upside of, you know, gentrification is typically been a bad word. Um, you know, it's, like, on some levels, it's unnecessary for people to buy their home for a hundred thousand dollars, you can have something for them. You know, I mean, that's, that's huge money for a living, in my opinion. But, you know, can you stay close? What does that look like? Is it going to be more close than my mom and sister? Just moved back from California, because it's way too expensive to live in California. If you come here, you see these prices, and this is a beat. We have people selling three ninety-dollar homes in California, and buying two ninety-dollar homes for cash. Uh, and so that is also a way to pressure the prices when people have that kind of income. We're getting people from, you know, cities that are a lot more expensive. So I know we, we've talked about housing stocks, we've talked about ADUs, we've talked about some of them. Can, can you quickly go over the ADU, just from a standpoint of, you know, R1, R2, their SBYSOP right now, correct?
Yes, so...
There are avenues to allow for that, but, I mean, I think just allowing it ubiquitously is, I think, something that's needed to talk about. But it needs to be talked about in terms of what is the goal? What does that look like? And what works for farmer's branch, not only today, but as we look at the future? Because once you said they traded those, you started pulsing.
Right. So you're correct, uh, in terms of ADUs right now, we allow them only, uh, we have several residential, single-family residential zoning district. We allow them only in R1 and R2 zones, which are traditionally are larger lots. So where it, from a space-wise and land-area-wise, it made sense that you can accommodate an accessory dwelling unit. And right now, the code states that it's only for immediate family members. So if someone has a old parent, aging parent, who wants to live with their kid, they can live in that accessory dwelling unit. It cannot be rented out to someone outside. Um, so that's how the code reads right now. Last direction we had was to go also look at the Plano's ADU policy, where it was more, um, I'd say aggressive, in terms of it could be rented, and there were more zoning districts where they were allowed by right. In our case, you have to get a specific use permit, which is more or less like a zoning permit, goes through the whole process, comes through Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for approval. Uh, so the range is, right now, we have a very, um, limited choice of ADUs, and also restricted to immediate family members, and they cannot be rented. So if you're asking for the maximum range is, yes, we can look at other zoning district where they might be feasibly allowed, um, look at allowing them by right. And also, when you look at the rental component, that's when it becomes a bit complicated, because you have to have either the homeowner stay on the property. That way, it's either rented together at one unit, or if you're rented separate, then the homeowner has to be available. That way, it can address, um, other associated problem that might arise if you allow the ADU to be rented separately, if the homeowner is not present. So in a nutshell, I know it's a lot of, um, little details that we have to look at, but that's what, uh, the full range of ADU policy or ADU regulations, um, can be. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Wolf. So I wanted to touch on something that Charles said here a second ago about just the housing, or that we currently have surrounding farmer's branch, the Carrollton area, Dallas area. And looking at this pie chart, I mean, this doesn't scream to me that we need a table out. I'm just looking at it from the devil's advocate perspective. So, and then you talk in society, I guess, what is this chart supposed to look like? Because I've got questions about, we really need more, you know, houses. Probably just trying to replace older and important units, sorry. And, and thinking back on it, we always hear about residents wanting more retail experience, or restaurants. Income thrive then. So...
Yes, it does.
Someone kind of explain to me the other side of that.
Like the shops at B Street, like the shops at Mustang Station. So that's another part of the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. We weren't doing a long company, and then putting Roots and Red Sticks right down the street. So there's got to be a blend of income, um, so that our retail that we have, we have a limited amount of retail, can thrive and survive. But I'll let y'all talk. That was my...
We're seeing it right now, it's not necessarily thriving. You've got Roots thriving because you've got another restaurant that's next door, Cedar Creek. It's, it's okay for what it is, but, you know, you walk in there, it's empty.
Yeah. And it's dependent upon operator. Not to throw any operator in the bus, but if you have a wait of three weeks for reservations, and you have an empty one next door, it's not really the market, I would say, it's more of a product. So that's something to solve outside of a housing discussion.
But what I'm...
Fair.
Housing employees to income, those...
Yes.
So what I'm saying, if we're trying to, are we trying to increase this chart to be more green? Or, or what exactly is it that we're trying to do? Because we do have to be mindful of the surrounding suburb cities, just like Dallas, you talked about LBJ, that housing over there is, I would say, probably more affordable and tangible, it's lower income. First ring, Carrollton, maybe that falls into the Pan Am area. But I'm just, I just, I seem to hear arguments from residents, we want more of this, want more of that. But we're also not supporting it from a disposable point of view. And if we continue to grow this, or that, take us to the future in the retail and entertainment.
That's why y'all are here today, so.
Can I just ask a question, ladies, uh, to, to, you know, and, and, and maybe even part of this conversation naturally, you know, when it comes to a flourishing city, there has to be that difference in, in, um, in, you know, socioeconomic status of our families. I think you have that, but I, I mean, I agree with you, Geo. You know, we hear it all the time, need more retail, need more retail, but then people don't want density. And so if we don't have density, well, we're not going to have people to be able to shop there, to be able to, um, to, you know, uphold these restaurants. I think, I will say personally, for me, with the Renaissance program, I think it's more so keeping the people that are here in farmer's branch, here in farmer's branch. Right? Um, making sure that, uh, those that, you know, grew up here are able to stay here, not necessarily, um, you know, drive the, the, the affordable housing to a point where now we don't have enough people to be able to afford the things here. But I, I do think that, in looking at this, and looking at what other opportunities we have, I think we need to be very careful, because as I was saying earlier, is I think we need to, we need to do research on what, you know, blanket ADUs mean, what, um, some of these housing options mean, and how those have affected other cities. Because I've seen that them affect cities in a very negative way, in cities surrounding our own. And so, um, I think that we, we do need to do, I think we need more research, I think we need more data to show how is this something like this, whatever these options are, going to affect our state. Because I will say, you know, one of the biggest issues with census is that, of hoping that we would be over fifty thousand, because being fifty thousand, we're eligible for community development law grants. Well, those are the things that other cities have to be able to fund, some of these programs, like our rehab program. The only reason we're able to do that one is because we receive some care's funding. So now, how are we going to sustain some of these programs? And it's my question too, over the next, you know, two to five to ten years. Because we don't want to break something up that we're supposed to take away from our residents. And I think that's another question that we need to do, when it comes to how are we going to get for some of these? Where is, what bucket is going to come out of? Um, because at the end of the day, this, these, some of these programs affect a small group. But we have a whole community that is paying taxes, that is contributing. And so there are so many questions, and I think we need to be very careful in these studies, as how is this all going to affect our community? How is it going to, um, probably paying for it? And what are the pros and cons of every single one? Because I think, you know, like, like you mentioned... Because I think, you know, like you mentioned, Geo, in the Utopia Society, you want all of these to be equal. But at the end of the day, there are so many other things that drive this. Not just that he won, but the legion especially. And in looking at the experts when it comes to, you know, we're at economic summit last weekend, those, the prices just continue to rise. It's just something that's going to happen. You know, some folks saying, you know, we haven't raised taxes, we haven't raised the rates. But the Dallas County is raising it for us, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's a position or issue. And so I just want us to be very careful in these studies. I think we need to really do this, do the research, figure out the pros and cons of any new addition to what we already have. Because I do think we have attainable housing. I don't think we have affordable housing. I think it is attainable, but what is the direction, to Mayor's point, that we want? What is our goal? And if we have one, what we need to really do, I keep saying that, remember, we need our research to see how it's going to impact. Based on how it's affected others.
Well, honey, with this project, that's what we've done. Because this is, yes, because this was an area that was already depressed. And so, so, you know, it was an area where our housing stuff was already aged. And so what we did was help maintain the, the look of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood, and the residents in that neighborhood, and still allow for there to be a level of growth in aesthetics and in value. And so I think if we approach it more like that, instead of, instead of being, you know, this, this huge goal of, of we need more affordable housing, we need more attainable housing, and instead look at these small pocket projects that we can help maintain the housing diversity that we have. And I think that's a good thing. And we need to remember that, I know in your economic development, our update on Tuesday, fifty-seven percent of the DFW workforce is within some five-minute drive of the city of Farmer's Branch. No other, no other city can say that. And so with, with that level of commutership, that, we need to think about that when, when we talk about how much diversity we have in this very small residential area that Farmer's Branch has.
Yeah. Thank you. I thought Giovanni said it really good, his comments, especially about the share in the market. You know, I hear from staff that eighty percent of homes in Farmer's Branch are over fifty years old. Many are over sixty years old. And so for today's families, I'll say they're functionally obsolete the way they were built. Now, people have adapted, but some of these homes weren't built for five, six, seven, eight people living in it. And we do have residential overcrowding in some areas. And I have these ideas about what we're hearing here, and especially as it relates to ADUs, and then I'm thinking about, what was Farmer's Branch when it was created? Farmer's Branch was a bedroom community. People worked downtown, and they came down, out to the suburbs to live and play and relax. And so we were the haven away from downtown. And the work environment's changed. Inflation is definitely outpacing people's incomes. And so when we, when we talk about this, I think we have to be extremely careful on that. We have been, because there is a difference between affordable and attainable. I believe, my opinion, and again, I would want to go out and have some town hall meetings about this, but I think people love living in Farmer's Branch. And we have a big senior population, many of them live in the area that we're talking about. But as folks feel bothered, they don't want to take care of all this stuff. And so that brings the point that we need senior housing, because they still want to stay in Farmer's Branch. But these homes, the market is determining value of homes. And if we were in such a desirable location, people would be paying the high prices that they are to live here. The affordability, I guess that's relative to everybody. I do believe that this program that we're doing with Builders Code is a good first step forward to do two things. One, provide a vehicle for some people to improve their quality of life in their house, or where they live. And number two would be that hopefully you will provide a spark to turn some of the rest of the neighborhood. Those homes, many, I said, many of the homes in the area, they're overcrowded. People have gone to the extent of enclosing their garage. And so that's brought out a whole other set of issues with on-street parking, on-grass parking. And so I just, I really feel like this is a good first step for attainable housing. We are surrounded by affordable housing. You can go on the other side of six thirty-five, and there's plenty of affordable housing over there. You can go a mile up the road into Carrollton, and they have beaucoup of affordable housing. I don't know that it's our job, it is not our job, in my estimation, to try to artificially depress the market just so we can have what some people call affordable housing. No matter what we did, prices are always going to go up. They're always going to go up. And it's, it's, as Robert said, it's more expensive to build a house here now. Even the demo rebuild program, I mean, you're providing incentives to people. It's, it's getting more and more expensive for those people to buy or build new homes in the city. But they keep doing it. We're really going through the city, it's going through the whole Renaissance. And I believe that's a good thing. But it pains me to think that some of what, some of what might be happening is somewhat pricing people out of living in Farmer's Branch, or taxing people out of living in Farmer's Branch. And I don't feel like we've done enough with the tools available to us from a tax standpoint to try to show responsibility to counter the soaring property values that is assessed by DCA.
I mean, to counter that, you know, a lot of the programs that we put in place to tear down and rebuild areas of homes is changing valuation that DCA is using in terms of our value, which is inflating, thereby causing a similar problem for some of these people. So while, it's been things running, it's always, you know, in respect, that, you know, unintended consequences, I guess, of some of that. So, I mean, we had a lot of discussion here today. Just to wrap up, I just want to try and make one recommendation, because Jill, I'm thinking about some of this. Of this piece, what would like to add is, our need to see over here, that's, we need year two, or however working this fellow group is, come up and frame, have some of these discussions in your study session to build that framework in some of these goals. You guys might want to see, I'm going to ask Council, to do the same thing. And they'll see where they, they marry up and align, and if it warrants another conversation. We do have some direction that we need to come back in the next quarter, if they try, you know, let's say, like, basically, we feel this is a direction, we want to focus and see what that looks like. And I do want to get to, we have some guests here that are going to speak up for first issue, or first topic, and I think, absolutely, send us as well. And so, just to save the time, you know, like, to get everyone out of here, like, you know, impossible, maybe twelve-thirty. You know, the conversation goes, so, you know, with that, just that, you know, audio, that you got, and we say from here, that's the direction to see. We're going to have independent conversations, y'all are going to have independent conversations, see where our goals and thoughts align, and if there's enough to warrant a policy change or some direction or something, we can, we can, Council will dictate, you know, what we're going to see. Appreciate the conversation, everyone, and say, very good remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, really good discussion and input. Thank you so much, everyone. We thought what we needed. Now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce our, our guest speaker.
Yeah, move, take it, we're finally breaking. Everyone's happy, we'll take it out.
I'll briefly introduce our guest speaker, Mr. Rick Cole. He's the Executive Director of Congress of New Urbanism. Mr. Cole is going to discuss with us the overview and long-term impact of new urbanism and its benefits. A little bit of, about Mr. Cole. As a mayor of Pasadena, California, Mr. Cole was among the first few elected officials in the nation to embrace new urbanism, leading an effort to rewrite the city's general plan to embrace timeless ways of building a target new human-scale development around the coming of light rail transit. Later, as city manager of Azufa, he spearheaded the first citywide farm-based code in California, a new urbanist tool for producing high-quality design. Mr. Cole also championed civic engagement, affordable housing, complete streets, green building, and community well-building as the city manager of Ventura, and then Santa Monica. Thank you so much, everyone. Please welcome with me, Mr. Cole.
Well, Mayor, and members of the Council, and our planning and zoning officials, and members of the community and city staff, I am very delighted to be here. I am one of the few Californians who loves Texas. I know that not all Texans love California. But let me tell you just a moment why I love Texas. I grew up in Southern California, third-generation Pasadena. Been to Pasadena, Texas, talked to the mayor. Rode the Gillies Bolt back in the day. And the reason I love Texas is because growing up in Southern California in the nineteen-sixties, there was a real can-do spirit. We, that was the, the time when California became the largest state in the Union. It was a big deal, growing up, as a kid in elementary school, that we were the biggest state in America. And that we passed New York, which had been the largest state the whole history of the country. And there came a sort of sense of responsibility that came with being the largest state in the Union. And my parents' generation, World War II decades, they, they believed in the future. They believed in investing in the future. And our public schools were, were top-notch, and we built a great university system, still world-class. And we built highways, we built new places for people to live. We were growing. We built a state water system with redistributed water, not always to the delight of the Northern Californians, but, you know, there was a sense that we were in this together. And so I see in Texas that sort of same can-do spirit, that same sense of believing in the future, of investing in the future, of believing that the best days are ahead. But that's not always true now in California. Some of that's curdled a little bit. The homeless situation is really kind of the simplest of hope that. And so whenever I come back to Texas, and I've been here many times, I admire your spirit. I know you have challenges, and we could learn some stuff from Texas. And I believe maybe there are even a few things you can learn from California. But I'm not here to talk about Texas or California, I'm here to talk about people. Because whether you live in Texas, or you live in California, or whether you live in Hong Kong, or whether you live in Nairobi, or whether you live in Rome, people have not changed much in five thousand years. We're maybe six or eight inches taller, because of the way we eat. But we're, we're still people, and we still like being around other people. And, and that has not changed. And this is the first time in human history that a majority of human beings now live in cities. Now, cities is broadly defined. Farmer's Branch is a city, and you might think, well, we're not a city where suburbs, but we're a bedroom community, as Councilmember said. But in terms of an urban area, right, in terms of the vast majority of history, people lived on farms. They woke up when the sun came up, and they worked all day, and when the sun went down, they went to bed. And it's, but, but over the last five thousand years, there's been a minority of people who've lived together. And that's what, when, when Ms. Sinon was talking about timeless ways of being, the, that's what new urbanism is about. It's about learning the lessons of the great cities of the past and applying them to the way we live now. Right? Because we don't live in nineteen twenty-one, we don't live in eighteen twenty-one, we don't live in seventeen twenty-one. We live in twenty twenty-two. And so there are things that we maybe have forgotten or neglected about, about how to build for human beings. But we need to bring that up to date. And that takes place, as I hope I'll convey, in unique ways. Los Angeles should not be the same as Farmer's Branch. Farmer's Branch should not be the same as Dallas. Dallas should not be the same as Oklahoma City. Right? There should be different climates, we have different histories, we have different cultural mixes. And there should be, as my grandmother taught me, a place for everything, and everything in its place. So that's what I'm going to talk about. So I hope that introduction sort of sets a context. I'm not here to tell you how to, how to plan your city, but I am here to tell you, you should plan your city. And that you're at a very important time in your city's trajectory. And that you're about to embark upon some very significant planning efforts. And I'm here to talk about the importance of that, and maybe introduce you to some ideas that you may be partly familiar with, not all familiar with, very familiar with, and it'll vary among the audience. But to kind of lay the groundwork for thinking about how you want to plan. That's your decision about how you want to plan. I'm not here to tell you what to do. But I am going to urge you to take this planning effort strongly, and not just the folks in this room. We can come back a little bit for that. In my hometown of Pasadena, when I was mayor, we had to, Ms. Sinon mentioned that we did a new general plan from scratch, brand-new. We literally threw out the old general plan, because we were... And, and we had to, because of a set of circumstances around California law, and lawsuits, and referendums, and all kinds of things, we, we ended up in kind of what the old Westerns used to call a box canyon. Right? Some of you are old enough to remember those movies.
Don't get in one.
Say again?
Don't go, don't get in one.
Yeah, exactly. You don't want, you know, and, and the one guy says the other, "We're in a box canyon, and we're surrounded, and we're going to have to shoot our way out." And we were really in that position. We were in a box canyon, and we were surrounded. So we had to, we had to think again. And I led one faction to the council, and the incoming vice mayor led the other faction to the council. And we were, we were at odds politically. But personally, there was respect. And so I sat down with her, and I said, "Look, we're going to have to work this out together. This fighting is not getting us anywhere." So, so we came up with the idea that we would involve thousands of people in our planning process. Thousands of people, not dozens or hundreds, but thousands of people. Because we're going to have to take it to the ballot box in the November nineteen ninety-two election. And a general plan in California looks something like this, right? And you're going to ask your citizens to vote yes or no. Right? And the typical reaction in California, because we're sort of used to voting on stuff, complicated stuff, is if you don't, if there's anything in here you don't like, vote no. Right? Because that's, you're better off just not having it. And so if we're going to get a majority of people to vote yes for a new plan, we had to involve them in making the plan. Right? Not just selling it to them, but have them be involved at the ground level. And I went to the planners, and I love planners. The mother of my three children is a planner. I'll leave it there. And, and they were very dubious about involving thousands of people. First of all, they said, "Rick, you know, thousands of people are not interested in planning." First of all, they said, "Rick, you know, thousands of people are not interested in planning. Very abstract, abstruse. We have these meetings, we send out thousands of postcards. We get a few people who lived here for 38 years, they come out, they're interested. But most people have better things to do than come to a Saturday morning workshop, right? They're busy, they got their kids, they got jobs, they got everything." I said, "Well, you know, we've got an election going, we've got thousands of people. And if we talk to them about coming to a planning meeting, they'll probably say, 'Yeah, well, never mind.'" But I said, "Let's talk to them about their future. Where are their kids going to be? What kind of jobs are they going to have? How are we going to pay for the parks and the schools? And if they don't care about that, check their pulse, right? Because I think most people do. They care about their community." That was my experience knocking on doors, getting elected. So they said, "Well, Rick, what if we have thousands of people? You know, we've been to public hearings, and they're not pleasant, right? Three minutes, and people..." Come on, there are better ways than just giving everybody three minutes. If you've got three minutes, that's really an insult to democracy, right? Three minutes to sit down. Let's put tables around, let's have people talk. Let's have a couple hours to really get common ground. They said, "Oh, okay." But here's the problem, Rick. They haven't been to planning school, and we have. And we know some things that they don't know. And, you know, in Southern California, they love their cars here. You're going to have to pry their old, dead fingers off the steering wheel. And I said, "Well, I've been knocking on some of those doors." People need their cars in Southern California. And they hate traffic. You've got that, right? But they're also paying those insurance bills every month. They're also having to buy a car for their 16-year-old, because everybody needs one. They're also having to pay now $5 a gallon gas. So let's just see how this goes. We had 3,200 people participate. And I'm not talking about 300 people that came 10 times. I'm talking about 3,200 people participated 10 times in really coming to grips with what they wanted to be. So that's a background, is I really believe you need to involve the people of Farmer's Branch, figuring out what kind of community they want. And they're not going to agree right at the beginning. And at the end, they're not going to totally agree. But if they work together, you can find common ground. I believe that in people. All right. So new urbanism. What is that? Some of you may have heard of it, some of you may have some ideas in your head about what it is or what it isn't. Okay. I hope over the next few minutes, I can share with you what it is across the country, what it is in distinct, different places, and what it's becoming. And you may decide that you'll help define new urbanism, because it's 2022, and it's Farmer's Branch. So I just took these off the internet. I had not been to Farmer's Branch before. My good friend, the former Vice Mayor of Carrollton, Texas, who I've known since I was on the council of Pasadena, brought me here, and we went on Joe C, and we've been around. That's why I was late. I apologize. I thought I had the idea that you all would not be on time. So I thought I would at least get a glimpse of Farmer's Branch. But this is what I took off the internet. I'm sure someone will say, "Well, that's not a good... Okay, well, whatever." But I can see you care about your history, and you've got some new developments, some older developments. So there's something called the old urbanism that I made reference to, of, you know, 5,000 years of people building villages, towns, and cities, and even mega-cities. Rome had a billion people 3,000 years ago. This is a picture, I think it's Farmer's Branch, at least the web says it is. But they also say that Abraham Lincoln said, "Don't trust every quote you see on the internet." But then Dallas is right below it, you know? And this is the way Americans built 150 years ago when they came here from Europe, or Asia, or Latin America, or Africa. They brought with them timeless ways of building, timeless materials. And then they adapted them to local. And it was around walkability, because cars weren't much around. And so everything was built so that you could walk there. And you can see the cars are just coming. And I'm not going to read this stuff. I figure you can read faster than I can talk. So... But I want to kind of lay the groundwork. But this is the way we used to build, naturally. We built around human beings. And this idea, nowadays, we have this term called mixed use. If you talk to people 100 years ago about mixed use, they would look at you like... What does that mean? We had to invent a term called mixed use, because uses used to be mixed naturally. If you go to... How many of you have been to, what's it, Williamsburg in Virginia? Yeah. So I took my kids there a couple times. And you've got the Waxman's Forge in the front, or the guy that assembled the muskets in the front, and then lived in the back, and then had a farm or a vegetable garden, you know, in the rear, and a couple of sheep and what have you. And that was mixed use, right? And you could walk to the church, and walk to the tavern, and walk to the, whatever they called grocery stores in those days. That's the way people built for 5,000 years. We stopped doing that after World War II. We created a completely different way of building cities than human beings had ever done in history. Some of that experiment was great, right? We were able to house 150 million Americans in this brand-new place that we created since World War II. But it's starkly different from the way people used to do it for hundreds, even thousands of years. And it didn't just happen, just happen. There were some brilliant minds who said, "You know, we've got these crowded cities, we've grown up as a country really quickly. Let's plan for a much better way of living." And General Motors in 1939 spent $2.5 million on a pavilion at the World's Fair. Now, what was happening in 1939?
World War II.
Just on the horizon. 10 years of depression, right? We complained about COVID going on for two years, right? Oh, my God. When's it going to be over? The depression went on for 10 years. It really wasn't until America started building airplanes and stuff that they started going back to work. So for $2.5 million, you could buy America's best designers for a ham sandwich and a cup of coffee. And they built this fabulous pavilion. People waited four hours online to go through this. And when they got, at the end of it, they got a button that said, "I've seen the future." You can buy them on eBay for like $100. And 12.5 million Americans personally went through this pavilion, right? And the country was only 120 million people. And what they saw, and this is pre-C... What is it, CG...? What is it? Computer graphics, CGI? This is pre-CGI. This is pretty low-tech. But they had this diorama of the world tomorrow. We're going to be freeways, something called shopping centers. And downtown was going to be high-rises. And we were all going to live in little houses out in the suburbs, picket fences. Interesting factlet. The designer was not religious, so there are no churches in Futurama, which some people noticed. And so the second year that it ran, they put little steeples on some of the buildings. But people said, "Wow, this is really cool." Here's the genius, which I'm not showing. After you got out of that little chair, before you went out, they had a huge, to-scale version of a little piece of Futurama with General Motors' green cars that nobody had ever seen before. These were those kind of Futurama cars at the curb. And you said, "Oh, oh, okay. This is real." And so G.I. Joe and Rosie the Riveter, during those next four years, thinking about, "When this war is over, we're moving to Futurama. We're moving to the suburbs. We're going to build our little house. We're going to get, we're going to buy a General Motors car and a General Motors frigidaire. And we're going to live the American dream." And by God, we built it. We built it in California, we built it in Texas, we built it in New York, we built it all over America. And it was really from this idea that all of that is from. And there it is, right? And we all grew up in some version of that. It wasn't, you know, always equitable. I think we're looking back now and realizing that things like redlining, discriminatory real estate practices, meant that not everybody enjoyed the American dream in the same way. But you have to say, it was a remarkable achievement that America won World War II and then built a whole new version of itself. Trouble is, is that, you know, Futurama, when you get up close to it, some of the pieces of Futurama are not as attractive as they look when you're looking at them on the diorama. And we've kind of become enamored to this. We kind of think, "Well, that's just... What's the matter with that? I've seen that a million times." It's not a particularly efficient use of land. It's not particularly environmentally sustainable use of land. It's a really expensive piece of infrastructure. We sort of take it for granted that, you know, $1 million for a freeway. Billion, you have a billion here, a billion there, pretty soon it adds up to real money. We've kind of taken it for granted. This is just, this is civilization, right? This is what you do. You've got to build, if you want to have civilization, you've got to build $1 million freeways. And when they get crowded, then you've got to spend $2.5 billion to widen. This is never the way people lived before. This is a radical experiment for many years. And it's an extensive one, and bills are coming due. Because building it when everything's brand-new is something... Then when the tax base is no longer, you know, brand-new and shiny, then you still got to come back and rebuild it. You're talking about the age of the housing stock, the 50, 60-year-old markets, you know? Bill's beginning to come due for functional obsolescence, as you said, for some of this. Some of this is functional obsolete. And we invented this thing, we didn't really, the traffic engineers invented this. It's the worst of both worlds, right? There's something called a road, and something called a street. And now we just use them like they're the same thing. Road and the street, they're the same thing. What do you look at? They're different. A road is to convey, there's a railroad. A road is to convey people from one place to another quickly. And a street is a place where you want to stay. You want to shop, you want to walk, you want to linger, you want to meet your friends, you want to live on a street. You don't want to live on a road, because you've got things going by really quickly. Roads are really dangerous, which is why we don't allow bicyclists on freeways. But we invented this thing that was a combination of a road and a street. You've got six-lane roads, and you've got single-family homes, and you've got shopping and restaurants on a road. And you've got a lot of curb cuts. And if you want to navigate that on foot or on a bicycle, you're taking your life into your own hands. And this is just made for congestion, right? Because people are turning into the Walmart, or they're turning into the Home Depot, or they're turning into the RVs or whatever. And they're turning out, and all of that. This is not particularly efficient as a road, and it's miserable as a street. Just not a place you want to be. So there's a new word. I don't know how many of you care a lot about English, walkability. That's kind of a terrible word. But it's like mixed use. It's a new word to try to describe something old that we used to take for granted. People 100 years ago didn't worry about walkability. They didn't worry about, "Have they done 5,000 steps?" Because they did, right? They didn't drive to the gym to go on the treadmill, right? You walked. That was part of life, right? You walked to church, your kids walked to school. And so now we're having to say, "Well, we've got to go back to something called walkable urbanism, or walkability." This is not an exotic concept, except to us, it's sort of new, because we kind of lost touch with it. I'll come back to this picture. But this is a little unfair, because there's no landscaping yet on these brand-new houses. But this is how we used to build neighborhoods. And this is more often than not how we build them now. And, you know, again, I'm going to, if you want to say, "Wow, they've got trees now." I cheated a little bit. But where would you rather live, right? If you're a car, I think this is way better. This is really way better. In Southern California, we have seven parking spots for every car, which is why we have no homeless cars. On my count of 60,000 homeless people. But, you know, we sort of defaulted to this. And this is, you know, you could say, "Well, this is taste," right? And when I was growing up, I thought, "Well, this is just, everything new has to be like this, and everything old, so let's not build anything new, let's just hang on to this." And when I discovered new urbanism, when I met Stan, Stan thought responsible for it, but it just happened at the same time. I said, "Wow, you mean we could build new stuff that has some of the feel? And the benefits of old stuff? Wow, I hadn't thought about it that way." And that's really what new urbanism is about, is bringing back some of what we cherish about places like downtown McKinney, where we went to...
Hutchins.
Hutchins.
Yeah, boy. Can't forget that in California. But that kind of feel of the old-fashioned downtown, we can have some of that back again. And, you know, given the way we've developed, we often have a kind of a bleak public realm. Because things are sort of spread out, it's too expensive to have the nice things. And so if you kind of... It's all magic, right? The magic of CGI, which we even have in Futurama. But, you know, if you begin to do some infill, you can suddenly now afford the kind of nice things, the street trees, the bike paths, the, you know, ways in which it just becomes nicer and more walkable. And then you don't have to worry so much about artificially having to walk. I was just in Atlanta a couple days ago, and I'm going to boast about this. I'm not a name dropper, but I got to have lunch with the chairman of Chick-fil-A, Dan Catherine. He's just an amazing human being. And he's given us some funding. He's building a new urbanist community from scratch, right outside of Atlanta, which is where we had lunch. And he really believes in this. He's a big believer in the Book of Nehemiah, and how the Hebrews returned to Jerusalem, rebuilt their community from scratch, from the ground up, because it just didn't demolish by the Babylonians. And that's what motivates him. He's got $7 billion. That's how he wants to spend his money, is building communities from the ground up that people will love. So this is what it looked like, you know, when they built this fancy new football stadium. And again, magic of CGI. Which is a nicer, you know, environment? Which would you choose? This? Or this? And it's sprucing up some of the old, and it's also humanizing some of the new. All right. This is kind of the way, if you're flying in on the airplane to DFW or LAX or any of the others, this is sort of what you see out on the ground. We haven't done enough planning. We didn't really, this all sort of happened. And we'll talk a minute later on about why. New urbanism is about more compact, complete, and connected. It does not mean everybody's going to live in an elevator or story apartment building. It does not mean that. And we'll talk more about that. But it means that things are closer together, and they're connected by a walkable realm, right? Whether it's low-density residential neighborhood or a high-density downtown, people should be able to, we should... people should be able to, we, we should privilege people, rather than privilege cars. The Charter of the New Urbanism is what sort of started all this. And, and this is, this is what we said back in 1993. And I am gonna read this, even though you can't. "We stand for the restoration of existing urban centers and towns within coherent metropolitan regions. The reconfiguration of sprawling suburbs into communities of real neighborhoods and diverse districts. Conservation of natural environments, and preservation of our buildings." I think that holds up pretty well twenty years later. And again, just as I made a distinction between streets and roads, there's a distinction between a city and a town. A town is McKinney scale, right? You don't have high-rise buildings in, in the downtown McKinney. What you do in the downtown Dallas. The difference between a town and a city, there's a difference between a road and a street, there's difference between a neighborhood and a downtown. And, and those differences matter. I'll let you, this, we also recognize there are significant problems with the way we're building in America today, and it's really a part of our, of our charter. So we started building new stuff, like Dan Cathy is, is doing down in Atlanta. And Seaside, Florida, somebody's probably been there, or seen pictures of it, the Trune Show was filmed there. And the guy just inherited, you know, 500 acres of Florida's coastline. And, you know, he wasn't trying to build anything special, he was trying to build a nice town, that he would be proud of. And it's turned into, you know, nosebleed prices, because people love it. There wasn't anything like it, and they just bought to it, and now, now it's, they didn't set out to do that. Over on the, in the middle there's Kentlands, Maryland, it's all over the country, they started building this, in different scales, different architectural styles. The one on the, on the bottom right is, is a HOPE 6 project, that's public housing. It's actually mixed-income public housing. But, you know, it's very different from what our image is in minds of a 14-house. I found this on the internet. I was warned, be careful, big one, farmer's branch are not big on Dallas. We're not Dallas. Okay, forget that. But, you know, the Dallas area, there's, there is clearly conversation about how you wanna grow. This is where I wanna start about what really matters. The first thing you have to start with is a vision, right? What is the vision of farmer's branch? What are your values? What, what kind of community do you wanna be? Do you wanna be what you were in 1950?
Maybe.
And if so, what's the essence of that? What, what is it about 1950 that, that you really care about, that you'd like to keep? In California, my mayor in Santa Monica said, we gotta plan for 2050, not 1950. So, so think about your values, think about the things that you really wanna retain, that are important to you, history, your culture. In Azusa, when we went through the general plan, our values were faith, family, opportunity, hard work, Latino-majority community. Those were the bedrock of the values of what they wanted to see their building, their city, become, and build on those values. People are like, well, does that have to do with zoning, and planning, transportation? Well, it has everything to do with those things, right? Churchill said, and I, my students in my public policy class, they don't ever mimic Churchill again, so I'll give it to you in English, my version of Churchill. But he said, first, we shape our buildings. Then our buildings shape us. And it's, it applies to our communities, our neighborhoods, our cities. We grow up, you know, thinking this is the way things are. And, and then we go to other cities, and say, oh, this is different, that is different. But how we grow up shapes us. And so, be intentional, right? You're a community of 36,000 people, you're gonna grow, you're gonna change. How do you wanna change? What do you wanna keep? And how are you gonna keep it as the world changes? But what are you gonna be open to as you're gonna change it? That means it's a question for you and your community together, because everybody's gonna have their own input. That means having, you know, this kind of effort, but involving many more people in this, and, and encouraging. We can talk about how to do that, but I won't give you the time for that now. It's a little hard to read, but, design matters. And I wanna be very clear, if there's one thing you remember about that guy from California, what was his name? Is, when I talk about design, I am not talking about your personal preferences, if I like blue, or I like red, or I like craftsman style, or I like modern style. I'm not talking about that kind of design. I'm not talking about personal taste in architecture. I'm talking about where the front door is, and whether, and whether you can find the front door. I'm talking about whether the, the front door is behind 100 spaces of parking, or on the sidewalk. I'm talking about, not whether there's an ADU, but whether there's a garden between the main house and the ADU, so that it isn't all crowded together, and, 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 that's design. And that's the thing I want you to remember, is, design matters. And again, Texas Legislature, anybody else can tell you, you know, you should not care about design. The kind of design I'm talking about is not about imposing your personal taste on your neighbors or other people's property. It is designing your community, particularly the public realm of your community, so that it serves the health, and the wealth, and, and the, and the quality of life of your community. Design matters. This is from Florida. You know, they, they, this is the same stuff. But on one side, it was built by a developer who built it the way they wanted to, and then they adopted a code, and said, said that, you know, we had the first Form-based Code, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about Form-Based Code. It just says, this is how you build a building, so it said, you gotta have doors and windows, and, and because it's a hot place, you've gotta have a, 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 let's say, or whatever it's called, you know, hallway over that. So, stark difference. Same cost, pretty much. Costs, didn't, didn't cost more to design a different one. And especially if you, if you have the rules up front, right? You don't wanna have people design a building on the left, and say, no, no, don't do that, go back and do it this way. You wanna have the rules set, so when they come in, they know they got to build on the left, and on the right. You know, Starbucks is everywhere, and, you know, you can, you can ask for what you want. And I'll give you a quick, I don't wanna bog down in this, but I remember CVS came to us after we adopted Form-Based Code, and we said, we got, your, your front door has to be on the sidewalk. And they said, well, we're gonna put it on the parking lot, we're gonna put a parking lot on the front of our CVS. I said, well, no, that's not the rules, you gotta put it on the sidewalk. No, we, no, we don't do that. That's what you did in Clermont. Well, you're not Clermont, they said. And I said, you're Azusa, so we're not gonna do that here. And I said, well, then you're not gonna do it at all. And they said, well, you've never had a city manager talk to us like that. I said, well, you've never been to Azusa before. So, you know, you get to, you get to set some standards, and, and one way to do it is to say, well, just walk all over us, you know? We're, we're a farmer's branch, we can't, you know, we can't compete with Isit Richardson. But, you know, pride. If it's, if it's important to you to have something that's nice, then say, that's what we're, that's our standards here. And I can tell you this, my last two years in Azusa, when I got hired in Ventura, out of 88 cities in Los Angeles County, Azusa had the highest appreciation of assessed value, hired Beverly Hills, hired Pasadena, hired big, growing communities like Lancaster, because we set high standards. And suddenly developers said, huh, maybe we oughta invest in Azusa, because the prices were low, and we, we raised the bar. This kind of thing, you know, is, is possible. You can do this. And I'm not just talking about closing your streets, I'm talking about doing quality design, and, and making it easy for your, for your restaurants to thrive. Because the public realm is, is intractable. But then you gotta do the planning, you gotta actually invest in figuring out, okay, here's how this has, has to work. This doesn't just happen by magic. You have to, you have to empower the planners to set the standards and to hold to the standards. I put design ahead of economics, some of you may put economics ahead of design, but economics matters. The first version of this, Bernstein used to say, well, things that are unsustainable have a tendency to come to a stop. That was his little subtle appeal. So he said, things that can't go on forever don't. And, and a lot of things that, that we've taken for granted in our country just can't go on forever. You can, you can take a six-lane freeway, and you can expand it to eight, you can take an eight-lane freeway and expand it to 10. But you can't take a 20-lane freeway and expand it to 13, right? And at some point, you have to say, basta, as they say in Spanish. So, economics. This is, this is 2,000 linear feet. One's in New England, and, and one, I think, in Tennessee. Which one do you think is paying more taxes to support the services in the community? The sprawl, the way we, we tend to build nowadays, or the way we used to build? I think the answer doesn't prove obvious. There's actually some folks that, that are close to us in the new urbanist movement, that actually go with computers, and they figure out, this is a little hard to read, but you'll, you'll notice the, this is a new urbanist neighborhood, built from scratch. And these are neighborhoods built more or less at the same time. I think this is, this is, and you can see the, the difference in value, right? The historic downtown, this is the assessed valuation, right? And it turns out that Walmarts, hail of Texas, they also take a huge amount of land, right? And so on the per-square-foot basis, they're actually not that big a tech difference. Who do, unless you look down a computer. And, and this is, this is a paradox, right? You've spent the first hour and a half, do we want higher home prices, or not? But if you build a lot of nice stuff, the really nice stuff doesn't look like this, right? If this stuff looks all nice, that, that would not be such a difference in style. This is from a radical group, I, I don't know if it'll go over in Texas, the National Association of Realtors. But, but they actually say that, it turns out that, that people like living in places where they can walk to restaurants. They actually pay more for it. And some a little more, some a lot more, some, I don't remember mine, okay, that's fine. And it turns out that this is highly correlated generations. There are some baby boomers who, who like this, and, but, but millennials really like this. And since there's gonna be more millennials in the future than there are boomers, it's something to pay attention to. This is, believe it or not, this is brand-new, it's 20 years old, but it's not 100 years old, right? This is gonna keep its value for 100 years. This is not gonna, you know, be functionally obsolete. This, this kind of stuff is gonna, is gonna stick around for a while. And, and so, so are the generations that lived there. I mentioned the, the picture that, before, I hope you can see it, it's a little small. But they, these are, this is from where I live. These are two versions of, of, you know, six-story apartments, built at exactly the same time. What's the difference? This one is built in the city of Los Angeles, this is three blocks away, built in the city of West Hollywood. The city of West Hollywood says, you gotta do this, and this, and wide sidewalks, and plant trees. The city of Los Angeles says, you can do any goddamn thing you want, and, and, you know, it's okay with us. This is why I left this, I was, I'm gonna send it, mercifully left out of my biography. For two years, I was the deputy mayor of the city of Los Angeles. I was in charge of a $5 billion budget. And this is why I, I left that, to go be the city manager in Santa Monica. Literally, this is why. I, I put my son Diego in, in the car, and I said, let's go kick the tires in Santa Monica. And we, we drove out Santa Monica Boulevard. And it wasn't Santa Monica that changed my mind, it was this, it was looking at the difference between the city I was working in, 4 million people, and the city of 40,000, that could set a different standard. That's what I'm saying. I'm not telling you, you want four-story apartments, but I'm telling you, set high standards for what you want. Because in the long run, it's gonna pay off for you in quality of life, in economic value. These are, you know, it, it's a little narrower streets, and it goes, well, what about all the cars? You know, there's a lot of places in America where there are a lot of big empty parking lots. There's plenty of parking, but there's not really much place to go to. And so, it turns out, and I, I used to say that my, my three greatest accomplishments is mayor of Pasadena. Number one, our general plan, which has been just a goldmine. Old Pasadena's property values have tripled, our sales tax has quadrupled. And so, my number-one achievement was the general plan. Number three was putting parking meters in Old Pasadena. And number two was not getting recalled for putting parking meters. Because people were furious about it. But what had happened was, we built three parking structures at public expense, to accommodate all the people who loved, you know, the historic revitalization, and the restaurants, and all this. And, and to pay for them, we were charging people for parking, and so they would circle around the block, over and over and over again, because they didn't wanna pay for the parking structure, they wanted to park on the street where it was free. So it was clogging the streets, and we were losing a million bucks a year in debt service. So we put in parking meters. And just to give you a sense, this is 1992. There was a legend, which I thought was just a legend, that, that there was a public works director in the 40s who'd ordered parking meters. And, and the parking meters were, were buried in the basement of City Hall, along with the public works director. And I, I thought it was a legend, although one day, when, when, when the heat was really on me, I went looking in the basement, are they really here? It turns out, there was actually basis to the, the, Pasadena did order parking meters in the 40s, as did Glendale, which is our evil twin. Do you have an evil twin hotel next door to UDA?
With Dallas, I guess, right?
But Glendale's our evil twin. They ordered parking meters at the same time, they put them in first, the entire city council was recalled, all five of them. I looked it up in the LA Times, over parking meters. So Pasadena said, send back these parking meters, we don't need them. So I come along, you know, 30 years later, and, and I'm responsible for putting in parking meters. But what happened was, I made a deal with the merchants, I said, look, you get 100% of the parking meter revenue to, to put in foot patrol, and, and we even did horse patrol, to, to, to clean up the streets, because, you know, they was part of the city, so we cleaned it once a week. But we had a lot of people, so we started cleaning every day. And then some beautification, you know, putting in these kind of, you know, amenities. And, and that's what, and all of a sudden, people loved it. And, and things really took off, because we were managing parking, instead of having lots of empty parking lots. We suddenly had full parking lots, because people wanted to be there. It was an attractive place to be. And the other thing is, you know, density, if you're gonna do density, you have to have an offset. If you're gonna have people live in smaller places, they need green spaces, right? There's a trade-off, right? It's not, let's take single-family houses with backyards, or let's have a giant, you know, apartment that covers everything. If you're gonna, if you're gonna have a mix of higher density, then you have to have a mix of green space, right? And, and you can afford it, both in terms of land, and, and in terms of economics, because you're getting more land value out of the higher density. But you wanna have, you wanna have that trade-off. You don't wanna just, you don't wanna give up some of the value. But it's different, right? It's different than a backyard, it's, it's shared space. This is the kind of infill that, you know, can happen in, in places that were, that were built long ago. ago, where there wasn't much value placed upon walkability and upon economic efficiency or environmental efficiency. By the way, you know, all that battery acid and all that tire rubber, that washes into the, I don't know if you guys worry about the Clean Water Act here in Texas, but, you know, all that stuff's got to go somewhere and there's better ways of doing it than having big, giant parking lots. And it can happen over time, right? Here's a strobe, kind of a rural version of it. You do some small-scale stuff, and then you begin to fill in. And, you know, this is kind of the magic of CGI. There's another version of it in a downtown, which is not particularly applicable to Farmer's Ranch, but just to give you a sense of what it looks like in metro scale. But this is CGI, right? So, okay, fine, Mr. Cole, that's all very well and good, but, you know, that's not the way we look here. This is a real place. This was built in the fifties, and it was the cat's meow in the fifties, right? Boy, this was a town and country village, you gotta go there, take the kids, get an ice cream cone. But newer, nicer places got built, and this place, you know, began to get empty and brick stores and dollar stores and stuff like that. And so they tore it all down. And this is what they built. This is the highest value real estate in the Silicon Valley, which has got pretty high real estate values. But people come from everywhere. It's called San Tandaro, they got a motel, they got retail, they got residential. It's gorgeous. And it is a goldmine. So it's not just, you know, some computer rendered, this can happen. You can dramatically improve an area, if you want to, right? Nobody's saying you have to. Mobility matters. I hope you have Chuck Baron come, because he's going to be much better than me to talk about complete streets and I'll just whisper this. So, this is a part of it, but part of the reason I think we're starting with the broader picture here as you start the plan is, let's not get hung up on, right? Let's not get hung up on a word, or a phrase, or a piece. Let's think comprehensively. And think about, what are the pieces that we want, and where do we want them, how do we want them, how do we want them to fit together? But if you have, if you think about transportation as a functioning system, then you don't get so hung up on parking meters, or road diets, or any of these other things that become, you know, kind of lightning rods and controversy. You think about how to put together things so it works for everybody. And that takes some time. This is something that, you know, I have to explain to people, because Santa Monica was the ground zero for, have you guys, have scooters come to Dallas? So literally, the first ten scooters in America showed up on my street when I was city manager. So we were ground zero, there was an entrepreneur who put those first ten out. Permits, we don't need no stinking permits. And, you know, people freaked out, because they were everywhere all of a sudden, and they were dangerous, and people were riding them like crazy people. And so I was the city manager. And I had to explain to people, cars had to be domesticated. When cars first started showing up, they scared the horses, and they mowed people down like crazy. And they were terribly dangerous and controversial, and people banned cars from their cities, just like they reacted to scooters. It took from 1900 to, Ralph Nader wrote Unsafe at Any Speed in 1960. So it took sixty years to invent sidewalks, to pass the law into jaywalking, to manufacture traffic signals, to register drivers, to start driver training classes, to invent car insurance. It took a long time to build, to pave, there were no paved roads to build the interstate highways. It took a long time and a huge amount of money to build the infrastructure we now take for granted. It took decades. And so people say, oh, well, we can't change that overnight. You're right! You cannot change it overnight. That's why you have to think about it as a functioning system. We built a functioning system around exclusive, which works great if you're not too old to drive. It works great if you're not too young to drive. It works great if you're not disabled. It works great if you're not too poor to afford a car. It works great if you want to drive. But if you're too old, or you're too poor, or you're too young, or you're disabled, or you don't want to drive a car, you're kind of left in the cold. And so what we're talking about is not prying people's fingers off the steering wheel, we're talking about creating a functioning system that is safer, that is more efficient, that's less expensive. And it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take a while. There's this idea of a fifteen-minute city, which is the idea that, you know, you shouldn't have to get in a car to drive fifteen minutes to get everything you want. You should be able to walk or bike within fifteen minutes. You don't have to, but you should have that choice. And that means pulling things in a little closer. So it means not having a giant thing way out on the outskirts, because the land is cheap, but having smaller things closer in, so that you can get there. And then having the walkability to get there, having the sidewalks and the street trees and the design guidelines that make it possible for you not to have to walk through, you know, a vast, desert, isolated, hot environment. Because who's going to do that? Nobody. So that's, the movement around complete streets is building our streets so that they work not just for automobiles, but they work also for pedestrians and bicyclists and transit. There's a way of doing this well, and there's a way of really screwing it up, right? And you have to be careful, and you have to think it through. And what works on one street, you know, in Oklahoma is not going to work on even a similar street, you know, in Farmer's Ranch. You've got to be thoughtful about doing that. And it's also helpful to try some experiments, right? It doesn't cost much to restripe a street, it costs a lot of money to build a new curb, right? So maybe you want to just put some cones up and see how that works for three or six months. Look at what happened with outdoor diet, right? Well, take away a parking spot in front of my business, I'll kill you! Let me serve outside rather than go bankrupt? Bring it on! So let's be flexible, right? Let's try a few experiments. Let's not, you know, get hung up on that there's only one way of doing this. This is a basic thing, I don't know much about the topography of Farmer's Ranch and how this works, but there's a huge difference in efficiency. In some ways, everyone would like to live at the end of a cul-de-sac, because there's not much traffic on it. But the result is that, when you live on a cul-de-sac without much traffic, is there's a huge amount of traffic that gets loaded down onto the archerels, because instead of being able to walk or bike or drive next door, then you've got to go out on the archerel, and that's how you end up with these four and six and eight strokes. I don't know if you can squint and see this, but this is a mom yelling at Junior, get off the computer! This is very...
It's a...
Yeah, I get that, yeah. Get off the computer and go outside. Which parent has not said this, right? But then what's outside? You know, here's the park. And to get there, Junior's got to traverse a dangerous and bleak environment, again, that we sort of take for granted, but it doesn't have to be that way. It's not the way we built cities for 5,000 years. We just started doing this fairly recently, in the scheme of things, right? Not in my life, but in the scheme of things, fifty, sixty years is not a long time. Choice matters. Again, just like I said, remember, design matters. I'm not saying there's one size that fits all. Not everybody should live in a four-story apartment. I don't live in a four-story apartment. I am, here, at the risk of TMI, I'm building an ADU in my ex-wife's backyard, because that used to be our family home, and we hope our kids will have it as family home, it's the only bloody way they'll ever be able to afford Southern California. So, choice matters. I'm living ADU, eight hundred square feet. But it's, we're going to have a garden, and our 1910, not our, 1910 house is going to stay in our historic neighborhood. We want to have choice, right? Not everybody is going to want to live in a single-family or can afford to, but not everybody's going to want to live in an apartment, right? We need demographic choice for different ages, different stages in our lives. And that should be in every community, so you shouldn't have to move, you know, twenty miles away to have some of those choices. And that's what, this is really basic to new urbanism. A lot of people think, well, new urbanism, and sometimes developers will tell you this, new urbanism, let's stack as much as possible on our lot, because we'll make a lot of money. New urbanism is from rural to suburban, to a town, to the parts of the city that are not downtown, to the downtown. And there's ways of doing each of those pieces right, but if you mix them up together, if you put a twelve-story building next to a single-family house, that's not planning, that's not smart, that's not the way people have built for 5,000 years. You want to have, again, my grandmother, everything in its place is a place for everyone. And that creates a new set of opportunities that we basically lost in the last sixteen years. Pretty much, it's single-family houses or three- and four-story apartments, that's it. And you got to choose. And who wants that in my community? Especially next to me. But what we've lost is the duplex, the bungalow court, the garden apartment, that's all just been sort of wiped out. And those were really lovely choices that actually fit in nicely into a neighborhood. The single-family neighborhood is a modern invention. Neighborhoods used to have a mix. They were low-scale, but they had bigger houses and littler houses and back houses and houses above the garage, carriage houses, duplexes, garden apartments. And they evolved gracefully over time. Then you had something that we don't have anymore that would help us in Southern California, that boarding houses, where people could rent a room for $400 a month. We don't have that anymore, so we have tents out on the street. And this is a piece, we're not talking about radically starting over, you know, let's scrape everything and let's do new urbanism. It's an evolution. As a new opportunity opens up, what do you want to see there? And should it complement what's already there? Should it begin to start an evolution? That's really critical. And that means, you need to be very careful about that, figure out what you want. I remember, you know, I told you I was part of one faction on the city council. I was the slow broker. I was suspicious of all this new stuff, because it was crap. And I was particularly suspicious of density, because that's crap and crap. And so I was really frustrated, the city had just approved that on our most congested intersection, the planning commission, no slur on the commissioners here today, the planning commission approved a twelve-story building on our most congested intersection. And I said, we ought to talk about that at the city council. And I wasn't getting any traction, it was midnight. So I said, well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we rename the planning commission the reacting commission. It died for lack of a second. But that is, planning is not a noun, I mean, planning is a verb. And this is the kind of stuff that planners do, God bless them, it's important. But the most important thing is to walk your values, right? Is to have, encapsulate in your rules what you want to see and then stick to it, right? And you can do that, you can, as a community, you can figure out what you want. And it has to be realistic, right? You can't dream of things that are impossible, but you can, through dialogue and through expertise and looking at the market, having smart people, you know, help inform the conversation, you can figure out what you can do through these kind of efforts. And then you can stick to it and you will see it happen. And good stuff happens. That's how we got to be the most, how Azusa ended up having that economic success, is because we started showing what could be done. And people say, oh, that's pretty good, let's... And then we did a little better, and then a little better. And then pretty soon, we had a 500-acre development come in that is gorgeous. And the first developer who the voters turned down, he said, oh, this is Azusa, you know, you get the... And we have a mix, right? That 500 acre was apartments, big houses, little houses, medium houses, townhomes. 500 acres, you can do a lot of different stuff, it's very walkable. You can figure this stuff out, and you're embarking upon this thing, and it should be fun, it should not be dreary. I would recommend childcare, if you have a high level of Spanish speakers, translation. You can even have food, maybe even some music, right? And have it be interesting and enjoyable and not just talking. I'm getting to the end, so this is really important. For seventy years, we've used zoning, the P and Z, zoning was invented to keep factories away from single-family houses, that's a good thing. It was also invented to keep black people away from white people, which is not a good thing. And form-based code, which is a kind of punky name, some people call it a smart code, that's kind of a slick name. But it basically says, tell me what you want. And units per acre doesn't tell you what you're going to get, right? That's the difference between those now houses and the ones with the front porches. Same thing on the map, but very different in the real world. Similarly, if you have only segregated things here, here, and here, then you're not going to get that pleasant, you're not going to get the corner store, you're not going to get that kind of mix of Azusa. And so form-based code is not about floor area ratios or any of those sort of artificial formulas, it's, this is how we want you to build the buildings. Again, not style of whether you have brick or whatever, just, this is how it meets the sidewalk, this is, it's got a setback, it doesn't have a setback, it's this high or it's this high. That's the kind of thing that a form-based code will tell you. And that's really important. Is the front door in the front, or is the front door on the side next to the parking lot, right? Those are things that you can decide in a form-based code, that you don't get with zoning. And they look different, you know, zoning codes, you know, if you ever want to go to sleep, read your zoning code. But these are illustrative, because design matters. You want people, you want to be a little developer, come and say, oh, okay, so if I build this, that's legal? Yes, you can build that. But what if I want to do this? No, that's not legal. Here's what. And you can, you know, you can be more, you can build in more or less detail, and you can have one neighborhood where you don't have a style, and you have another neighborhood where you do, or you have a variety of styles. And here, I'm just about done. Cities should work for everybody, right? That doesn't mean that it's a paradise for poor people and utopia for rich people, who live in the real world. But it means that basically, nobody should be left out on the sidewalk, that's what it basically means. And/or waiting two hours to get on a bus to the job they need, right? Cities need to work for everybody. And I think we all believe in that. It's hard, it's really hard work. And it's easy for us to sort of default to, well, what's in it for me? What's in it for people who look like me? Or who are my age, or my political people? Well, that's not really America. America at its best is about being inclusive. And not just thinking about what's in it for me and the people who look like me, but what's in it for all the people that make up this great country of ours, even California. And this is where I'll conclude with, you matter. I, they're actually paying my organization for me to come and say this here, I'm grateful for the contribution. But this is about you, not about us. This is about you taking your destiny into your own hands as a community. And taking a few risks, right? Stretching the envelope a little bit, going a little bit outside of your comfort zone. But really thinking about planning for 2015. Who's going to live here? What kind of technology changes are already reshaping our lives? This has changed a lot of... This has changed a lot of stuff. This has changed how I figure out how to go to a restaurant, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. We need to think about how we're going to react to that and figure out how to make, we're going to have smaller families. How do we make Farmer's Branch? In the context of much larger, you know, the map of Farmer's Branch has white around it, right? But the world doesn't have white around it. The world has Dallas and Carrollton, and what else?
Addison.
Addison, you know, so you have to take that in mind. And when we did our general plan, we actually invited the mayors of the surrounding towns to come and do a forum for our citizens. What are you guys doing over there in Glendale, our Eagle Town? What are you doing in South Pasadena? Because again, transportation doesn't stop at the white space, the air doesn't, you know, stop in the white space, the economy certainly doesn't stop at the white space. So think about where Farmer's Branch fits in, but you are privileged, Farmer's Branch. You all have to think, well, Farmer's Branch is going to be the nicest place to live, at least for the people who live in Farmer's Branch. They're going to want to live here, and they're going to want to raise their kids here, and they're going to want to retire here, and they're going to want to welcome new neighbors because there's going to be new folks. So that's it, and I hope that's helpful. I love this stuff because I've seen it work. I've seen communities take control of their destiny. And it doesn't work out exactly as you hope for a plan, or as quickly as you hope for a plan. And not everybody's happy. There are still people who don't like parking meters in Pasadena. But together, if you work hard, you invest the time, and you think beyond just your white space, but you also build upon the values of this community, the shared values, and make those explicit, right? And then live those values, right? And we found that, we are on a tremendously fast pace with this general plan process in Pasadena, because we had to make the ballot, and we had to finish this thing and present it to the voters. So we couldn't afford to screw up. Because we'd screwed up before, you know, we tried to pass the tax assessment, had three days of hearings, and got our ears pinned back. So we couldn't make any mistakes. So what we did was we started with values and principles. And we asked people, what are the values? And we came up with seven principles. And then we built the plan at each stage till we finally finished it. But at each stage, we would go back and we would have these thousands of people, these thirty-two hundred people would come in, they'd talk, and we were on tables, and then at the next stage, when we were presenting back what we'd learned, we always started with these, with, did we hear you right? So we listened, we had all those tables, people wrote on, put stickies on and all that stuff. And when we came back, we wanted to make sure that we, and sometimes we did, and sometimes we was like, you know, no, you missed this. But we couldn't afford to go forward without validating that we had actually, you know, heard people and were reflecting what we heard. And at the end, fifty-eight percent of them voted for the plan. Now, forty-two percent didn't. So we didn't make everybody happy. But the plan stayed in place for thirty years because it wasn't imposed on you, right? People actually, it was a reflection on the community as we worked that time. So you're embarked on a really important process, and I salute you, and I hope this is of help.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, first, I just want to say thank you very much for coming all this way, for presentation, for your insight.
I'm going to be able to tell my grandkids that I visited Farmer's Branch.
But, you know, sharing the ideas, the thoughts, the way that your community had let this process, I mean, brings kind of new light to how we should look at this as well. Embarking on a fully comprehensive plan to marry the plans that we already have, that in essence are decided. How do we bring those into something that's workable, functional, that plays off the warm of it, and leads to, you know, ultimately what our community wants. I love the idea of start with your values, start with your principles, and then marry in what is the vision, what does that look like? Big conversations, start with an idea that lead to other ideas, and ultimately lead to what it is that we all want to see accomplished in this town. And, you know, when you think about the different communities that have tried, different things that have worked in their town, or, you know, maybe, it's not going to, this piece doesn't work here, but we would love to see that piece. And how does that all play into what, you know, Farmer's Branch, what does that feature look like? And seeing these examples, I think, hopefully sheds new light on what else is out. You know, there's a whole world that works in use and has different ideas and different ways that their communities interact, and which pieces of that do we want as we look, as we said earlier, to the future of Farmer's Branch, not only just for us, but for the kids in the next few generations? Because if a plan is truly a good plan, and it's centered in values and principles, it should carry on from generation to generation, and be representative of that. And so, you know, I look to, this opportunity is something that, as we said at the very beginning of this meeting, it was something that we said, you know, when we brought this idea a few years ago, it's going to be something that's just put in place overnight. It's going to start P and Z, it's going to start with conversations with our community as a whole. I love the idea of bringing in other mayors and the towns that surround us to say, how can we work in harmony? Because we are, we're not that siloed town that, you know, for a long time, I feel, that's kind of how we work. So how can we be that player that extends to the other communities, and we can work together, and we can connect in ways we haven't connected before, that hopefully builds a better community, not just Farmer's Branch, but communities that surround us as well? Because, you know, we go to a lot of other communities to shop, eat, have entertainment, you know, they should have the same opportunities here as we build places that they want to be as well as you need to us, but you need to them because they don't have it in their communities. And so, you know, I just want to say, it's a lot to think about as we process this, you know, if the methodical, and how we go forward. And I think that you've provided a workable framework that can allow us to take those building blocks and create something that is our own process, that will work for us and allow us to move forward. And it's probably going to not just work through these two groups, we have tons of boards and commissions, we have tons of community partners that need involvement as well, the business community, definitely our residents as a whole. And what does that look like? Twelve months to eighteen months, but I know that we'll be starting soon as we go down this path. And as it relates to new urbanism, I just wanted to push it to have this conversation. So I'm going to say thank you for bringing that up, because it's the overarching theme of a lot of different ideas that we've had amongst this council. And so with that, in terms of discussion, in terms of questions, I'm going to open it up to you first, Mr. Cole.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cole. This is very comprehensive, and I think for a lot of folks here, this is maybe a first dive or first introduction to this. And as you laid out so well and methodically here, there's a lot of components, it affects, you know, all of our lives, wherever you are in the age or lifestyle and all those things. And as has been pointed out, and as we all know, we're in a dynamic state, we're in a very dynamic region, and it's booming, it's growing. And I can recall when I filed a run a couple of years ago for council, and one of the first meetings, someone stood up and basically was like, hey, don't you go, if you get elected, have a moratorium on apartments? And I said, no, I don't think I can support that, no more than we could put a wall around DFW and the airport, the International Airport, and say, nobody else could move here. And, you know, this is part of the big picture and the challenge and everything, but I just, again, applaud you, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to all go home and think about this, talk with our friends and family and neighbors. And it's, I think, kind of the beginning of a discussion. And I have been wanting to have this for a long time, and I'm very grateful for it. And I think it's up to us that we can all be empowered by this, and, you know, open our minds, think, as you said, nobody agrees with everything. When I ran for council, people said, oh, why do you want to do that? People are going to hate you. And I said, well, people are going to like me, people are not going to like me, but, you know, we've got to go forward. And listen to everyone, and have a conversation, and again, nothing's going to happen overnight. But this is an opportunity for us to think about, how do we want our city, as a city, but also in the bigger region, with our neighbors and partners? You know, we share with the Netris, the Joint Command Center for Fire and Police, with our neighbor cities, transportation, all of these things, they're going to be even more critical, you know, as our city and region grows. And so I think this is just a great opportunity for us to all, you know, start this conversation, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah.
Mr. Cole, thank you so much for the presentation. Many in the room know that I served on planning and zoning as chairman for a number of years. I actually started on planning jointly in nineteen ninety. And so participation in how the city grows is terribly important. And what we have placed in our plans years ago, we have seen come to fruition. We've had some positives and we've had some negatives, as one would expect. But I want to make sure that people understand that this is a progression, it takes time, we've already heard that, I'm just reiterating that. But this is something that I'm very passionate about, and I thank my colleague, Mr. Driscoll, for bringing it up. It is something that I campaigned on when I put myself on to run for council, that I wanted to make sure that our comprehensive plans and the other plans we had become more cohesive, and saw the trend that we were getting more and more, a plan for this, a plan for that. We need to have this overarching perspective. It's a complicated subject to communicate to the public, and that's a point that you've made. And I think we really need to take the time and the effort to communicate and educate the public as we can, whether it's one-on-one or in a forum basis, to understand where this is going and the multiple layers that come together in making these things happen. I appreciate the point you talked about, for, you know, generations and thousands of years, we've lived this way. That time from Levittown, if you will, to where we are now, is really compact in the comparison of human existence. And I think unpacking that is very interesting, and it's something that I, I wanted to be an architect when I grew up. Five years of architecture at school just didn't seem to appeal me. However, those passionate things about form, about aesthetics, about purpose and use and function are still ingrained in me. And so I look forward to working with our partners here, council staff, P and Z, and our community in general, in making sure that our community is as prideful, if you will, and as functional as it can be, and has a long-term pathway for bettering ourselves and innovating ourselves going forward. So, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Cole, thank you again for your presentation today, and again, I look forward to working with P and Z and others. So, thank you.
Well, I think that you bring up a huge point in this, and that is communication piece. Words, terms, certain things can scare people when it's unknown or just comes with a negative connotation. And what is the true underlying message of what we're doing? And having roundtables, planning sessions, public engagement, where we can doodle on white paper together and make up an idea of things that we need, help disseminate that communication of what is actually happening, what this really means, and what this is going to mean for the future of our community. And I think before we just rush to jump to conclusions of what something might be, I think we all need to be mindful and relay that message, that we need to step back and better explain what this is and what this looks like in terms of every step of this process, whether that's with our parks, whether that's where we're switching to more form-based zoning, or what are we doing with our streets, you know, complete streets. You've been saying, how do you function with things of that nature, need to be fully explained. And it's hard to do in short-term periods, in short meetings. And so communication, like, as a parent, having these conversations that you need to have with the public, you want to pack that and showcase, well, here's option A, B, C, D, here's what that means collectively, here's what that means for this part of town or that part of town, or how do you connect with, you know, places, like, that all needs to come together. And, you know, the good part is, running this process, bringing in community partnerships and stuff like that, it helps get those communication points out to the most amount of people. So know, they know and understand what it is, they're going, how do you get to fifty-eight percent, right? You know, I'm not saying that's the benchmark, I'm just saying it's, more than fifty percent of people in a town can agree, this is a path, is a path forward. And I think that's what we're looking for, is, we don't want that, you know, where we come to here, like us to get to more of, you know, that works, that works for the most amount of people, that works for our city, and, you know, as we move forward for the next thirty, forty, fifty years, you know, this is what we want to see. So, you know, it's a huge piece, and we helped a lot about that. Some people, in my opinion, fifteen percent are involved, they're engaged, they love this, they understand it. Eighty-five percent of people, in my opinion, feel, they just want to live here, pick up their trash, they want me to get to where I want to go, I want to go work, that's it. But when you bring them in, you bring them into the conversation, because when it just pops up and they're just hearing about it, even though you've been talking about it for a year, it's still scary. And the more residents that know, they can explain this to people, they can explain it the way it's actually, it's going to help us, you know, succeed in this process.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say the same thing regarding communication, so I won't dive into it, I think it's so important. And I will say, coming on council before, I was a former staffer to our Eagle Town City Dallas. So I used to work on these plans, and I think one of the things that happens in a lot of these cities is, they put together these plans, Plan Twenty Forty, Plan Twenty Fifty, but they're all these iterations because there isn't that input from the community to understand what's going on, and things change, and things progress, and so they keep building on the same plan. But I think that's what makes this opportunity so important, to bring in the stakeholders, to bring in the community, to bring in the community leaders and the businesses, to talk and educate, because it's all about transparency. And I think that there's so much misinformation out there, even in the last, you know, few weeks, on, you know, road diets and complete streets. And I think it's not saying that we're going to do that, it's saying we need to have a conversation as a council, as a commission, to talk about how has transportation, how has transit changed over the last ten years? Because really, the last city we had was before we had the sixty-five, the six thirty-five expansion. Since then, the routes that people take has changed tremendously. So it's not about, oh, we're going to do this, it's about how can we get the data, the strategy, and do our research and our diligence to really have all of the information in front of us, and really engage our community on, okay, this is the information, now let's digest it together, let's learn about these new concepts, and this is the trajectory that we want to have. We can have a conversation, and they can say, no, we don't want it, bring it up to the residents. But I think we cannot do that until we actually look at and take a deep dive into all of these different concepts. Because I'm sure for a lot of folks that aren't familiar with walkability, you know, transit-oriented development, all of that, these are all new words for everyone. But when you look at what can happen, I mean, I was, you know, amazed at what other cities, similar to ours, smaller cities, can do based on what they know and if they have the information in front of them. So I just hope that we can look at this with open eyes and take it in and really explore, is this right for Farmer's Branch? It may not be right for Farmer's Branch, we won't know that until we look at, what do the demographics show us? We have that with the census. What do the numbers show us? What is the type of makeup of our, you know, working class? Where are they going? How are they commuting? Having all that would really, will really allow us to make the best choice for Farmer's Branch, not for Carrollton, not for Dallas, but for our community. And so transparency is going to be key, I agree a hundred percent with my colleagues here. And I think, you know, one thing we'll need to figure out as part of, and that will empower our planning and zoning team is, when is the right step, in conversation with our, with my colleagues as well, to bring in all of those different individuals? And, you know, what, you know, based on the groups that we want to bring in, when is the right time to do that? Because I think that also, to your point, makes a huge difference in ensuring that we do this the right way. Because the last thing I want for us to do, and I'll bring up the West Side Plan, you know, that's antiquated, things have changed on the West Side. This is a way for us to look at the entire city. This is a way for us to look at the entire city, so that way we don't have this hodgepodge of different plans that really aren't cohesive together. So, I'm really excited about that piece, because I know a lot of things have changed in that area of the district. So, with that, I'll digress, but I'm just really excited for the opportunity to get to explore this. And again, and especially for those that may be watching, it doesn't mean we're gonna vote on this tomorrow. It means we are taking the first step to have a discussion, to talk about it, get the data, and see if this is right for Farmers Branch. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Cole, I really appreciate your presentation, and my grandparents live in Ventura. Thank you for everything you've done for them. Grandfather gets out of Ventura Hospital today, so it's gonna be another good day. But your point, the things you showed us, I know exist here, because I used to live in Garland. Sorry, Garland. But I used to live in Garland, and I used to live in a pocket neighborhood where you had, you got off six-thirty-five, you went into your neighborhood, but if you wanted to go or do anything, you had to get on six-thirty-five, but a townie mall where it's this mall with the parking lots out to nowhere. And it's this down, jet-dour kind of place with curb cuts everywhere. We moved to Farmers Branch, we brought my daughter here because we wanted to be in a space that looked more like what you showed us than what exists in Garland. Now, we have another taxpayer, we have my son now, we wanna live by, have, keep both of our children here. First of all, what it looks like. So, I really like the direction that this is going. And I think that my neighbors who live on the West Side, they really do also like that direction as well, because that's why we're coming. We're coming from places like Garland, sorry, Garland. We're coming from these older suburbs that haven't made the commitment to this new urbanism because we like what's coming in here. There is walkability, there is mixed use and all of that. So, I really like this, and I think that, I think that my neighbors like it. I know that when I look at planning consulting, I look through the lens of my children, and I know my children are gonna like it. So, because I didn't like Garland, I'd like it here better. Sorry, Garland.
Mayor, could you indulge me in two quick war stories? When we, I was the co-chair with the other, with my vice mayor of the General Plan Committee, and we brought the staff recommendation for half a million dollars on the plan. And two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars was for the consultant, and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars was for community outreach. And the council unanimously approved the consultant, because gotta have a planning consultant. And they balked at the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for community outreach. And they said to me and the vice mayor, that's a huge amount of money. How much do flyers cost? And we tried to explain that this was not just about flyers to come to the usual meeting, you know, where we show a PowerPoint at you and you get three minutes to talk. But the food and the environment and the tables and the facilitation and all of that. So, they turned it down. So, I was, I had a short fuse in those days, so I resigned as the co-chair of the General Plan Committee. And because I was the leader of the neighborhood faction, they kinda knew they needed me. And they said, well, Rick loves this stuff, he'll come back, you know, he'll cool back. And a week went by, and two weeks went by. Then one of the council members came to me, pointed by his colleagues, and said, would you take two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand? And so, and so we did, we had to cut out, the twenty-five thousand was to involve high school kids. That was the one thing that we had to, we had to leave out something. But we thought we would get to the parents, and that the high school kids, to your point, had a stake in this too, right? You know, and so, we thought, and we thought they would be open-minded, but we had to cut something. But we never spent two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand better than that, and that was a really good investment. Not talking money, but in Zusa, this was not a community. Working-class Latino community, if you're eighty-five percent, or ninety-five percent, right? It's just, we live here. And so, I again felt we need to have a lot of folks involved. So, I hand-signed twelve-hundred mail-merge letters to every church deacon, every high school, every Little League coach, every neighborhood association, homeowners association president, anybody we could, who had the faintest role of leadership, and invited them personally to the first meeting where we had Henry Cisneros come and speak, because Henry's a friend of mine. And it was magical, right? And that, and we ended up having, you know, a huge turnout in a community that never had that kind of community involvement. And we were able to keep it. And when we didn't have enough Spanish speakers feeling proportionate to our community, we organized a meeting just for Spanish speakers, pre-hour session just for Spanish speakers, for people who feel comfortable. La comunión de la reunión de la comunidad. And my pigeons Spanish and the mayor's pumas Spanish managed to make people feel comfortable. And in the rest of the process, we had an over-representation of Spanish speakers because they were like, we matter, somebody's finally listening to us, we have something to say, and now we're gonna be part of this. So, you know, whether it's hand-signing letters or spending money or appealing people, overcoming some of those barriers, you have to be intentional about it to really pull people in. And if you do, people will come, I guarantee.
Right. I appreciate those stories because I think serious consideration to allocate a sizable amount of money to ensure that our community is fully engaged will be the best dollars spent on this plan. I mean, this plan ultimately needs one, two, three billion dollars worth of new development for a county this size, and you spend a quarter million bucks and you're, I mean, point zero 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 two-five percent of what that value is gonna come back to you. And it's the value that we all want.
The city manager's gonna be mad at me now, because...
It's not just this particular place, it's communication of city operations overall. And you've heard me say that privately and both publicly amongst our council. Communication has to improve, we have to do a better job. It's not just this effort, as I just mentioned, it's everything. And we need to look at how we communicate the positive stories that are going on. And we also need to listen to what impacts are occurring in the community so we can address those and communicate how we are addressing those going forward. So, this is just one more cog into that bigger wheel. I look forward to the opportunity to address that.
I agree. The ideas that you brought up earlier in your presentation, although brief, you know, to have meetings to get people to actually come, are these dollars helping with childcare? So, that someone can watch the kids while they're engaging in conversation, food, other things, because they're taking away from valuable time with their family. So, what is gonna incentivize them to come and be a part of these meetings? And so, I think, you know, thinking about those dollars in that way, in terms of participation, what value do we need assigned to that? And I think it could lead to a much better result. I promise you, three thousand people show up and be a part of this plan, that number's probably gonna be higher than fifty percent. Because our normal election has three, four thousand people right there. And if those people are buying in, they're the ones coming to the ballot box, they're the ones talking to their friends, even now, realizing that this matters. And I'm not saying that, don't know if it's gonna be on the ballot or not, it's a worthwhile idea in terms of full involvement, whether it's, you know, future may, future will never, something where we can all put that together and have our say. It's not, like I said, the ideas, the vision, the leadership starts at the top. We want the true value, the true input, the true direction to come from the bottom up, which is the residents, the businesses, the community partners, and making sure that this is very, I know, is important to everyone in this room. Congressman Lee?
Not to be redundant from what's been said here, but I was, I was very interested in hearing this today. From the gossip prior to this meeting, I was a bit skeptical on what you had to say. But while you were talking and while you were making your presentation, I kept thinking, I don't see this as a plan to change the whole city. I see opportunities to make certain parts of our city better. And certain parts will look different. I think we've already taken some of that action with what we're trying to do with the Mustang Station area. And of course, anytime we talk about doing anything in the city, people get all stirred up because usually there's a lack of communication on the front end. We're masters at not communicating well. And hearing this and just picturing it in my mind, it's about bits and pieces. It's not about wholesale change, but I think it's certain areas. And I know a lot of people were concerned, well, gee, they're redoing my whole neighborhood. You know, we're gonna lose what we have. And I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's, if the council does their job right, if PNC does their job right, they'll look and see, where does this make sense? We're not, it shouldn't be the whole city. But as you mentioned, people have to be flexible, and they need to be educated and given the opportunity to provide their input. It shouldn't be forced or pushed on them by eight or nine people on one board or five people on another.
Councilmember, really good points, and again, if I could, the genius of the process we went through in Pasadena was we were like this over weather to grow. And it was like, there was no give. And we changed the question to, we're probably gonna grow. Where in the city should we grow? And how in the city should we grow? So, the general plan was basically leave much of the city unchanged for the period of the plan. But to, in the areas that were, that needed investment, to direct investment to it. And because we had light rail coming to put, to take advantage of this billion-dollar public investment and put development around the new train stations. And people said, oh, okay, well, that makes sense. So, this, you know, no, we shouldn't grow because you're gonna put a four-story apartment building next to my house. No. But you can put a four-story building next to a transit stop that right now's got an empty parking lot? Okay, that doesn't bother me. Maybe I would've said I hate four-story apartments, but now I'm thinking, well, you know, that wouldn't be so bad. And by the way, the good thing is now my neighborhood's pretty well protected, right? So, that's the kind of thing you're exactly right, is that, and that's what the transit is about. It's putting things, again, in the right place and not just having the same thing everywhere. That's not a complete city.
And I think to that point, that's conversations we will have when we talk about apartments multiple times. What is the right place to leave Manhattan? There's opportunities here, our TOD, Farmers Branch Station, there's opportunities on the West Side, which is a, or the East Side, which is a heavily commercial area that insulates and protects the neighborhoods that we have. And I don't think any of us, at least that are on council right now, have any thoughts or visions of adding multifamily in that core part of the city, because it doesn't make sense right there. But I mean, you bring up a point, you know, I love that CBS story. You know, I personally believe that on my time, in my time as mayor, one thing I held true to is we deserve better, we should hold out for better, and if we don't, we're never gonna get better. And I believe that, especially at Farmers Branch. I mean, we are too proud of the patience and not to be able to get and ask for what we want, what we want as a community. And we need to be willing to hold out for that. It shouldn't just, let's do stuff, just do stuff. If we're gonna do stuff, it needs to be the right stuff and stuff that we want. And I know that's a message that's been communicated, at least from my seat, for a long time. Whether people like it or not, is what it is, you know? But, you know, I think that's what we, as the communities, when we approach this plan, we need to be mindful of that as well, because, you know, what is, what is that vision? What is the standard? And I mean, you even see that, how looking at apartment complexes now, you know, we're talking about four-story, but what is the highest investment use that could potentially be in these areas? And let's not be afraid to ask, and ask for better that builds and accomplishes these plans. And so, you know, it's not just the plan, it's the policy, it's how we interact, it's the vision we communicate, and it's being willing to hold to that, whether you're getting pressure or not to cease. If you're pressured, it's gonna be, we're not doing anything because that's not the right thing that we want. It's not the right thing for Farmers Branch, and because of what the community told us, isn't what they want. So, you know, I just said that mentality, we need to think about that, not just those sitting around here, those in the entire community, as we go out and communicate this message and have this conversation.
Well, I think that if you look back to our, how many years ago did we do the citizens' bond stuff and all of that? That was a huge, huge effort. David and I sat on several of those commissions, several of you here worked on those. Of us that have been on PNC for the past few years, we have done some communication with the citizens. And that bond committee was a great example of bringing in the community. They voted, for heaven's sakes, on what they wanted to have on the bond. Now, I wanted everything on there, of course, but they came up with a good decision as to where we, and I think there was a better buy-in. And so, I think that we're very, very capable of setting up those processes. We've done it before, we can do it again, we have the money that we can spend to that, and allot for that, and do a good job. And I think that Farmers Branch in the past has done a great job on that. We need to utilize that again and go forward with bringing in the community. Look at all these here. They're here in the community, and they're here, and I hear it every day, just like you hear it every day. Oh, my God, reduce the streets, oh! And I'm thinking they're blowing their heads up here. But, thank you, city, that you send PNC to a planning group once a year. David and I and Amber were there. Unbelievable information that we received on that road diet and a lot of the stuff that's what was done here. And it educated me, and I'm thinking if we could show those to everybody. I mean, I think this, this presentation ought to be on, downloaded in your home or something like that. But we just, I think education is the deal, education of our citizens in what that will look like and what we can go forward with. I've been here fifty years, and I tend to be here a few more, and I know that we've got kids that are growing up here. Gio is one of them that went to high school here, grew up here, you are too, Chris. And they've come back and they bought homes, and what a great story, so.
Well, David's been here since he was one or two.
I'm the alumni of one tire.
I mean, you bring up a good point, that bond committee, that was community buy-in, that took eighteen months. And the reason it took a little bit longer than we thought was, you know, we didn't wanna throw it up, you know, contentious. But it did pass, and while not everything on, they came from that process, which were these three-tiered ideas, and the sub-ideas from that was, it's a small framework, it's a small plan. I think we've accomplished all of one of the items that were on that plan. We used the bond funds to accomplish the business. And then from within our budget, as you go, we've accomplished the rest. The last one on that's the streetlights. Very, very passionate about that myself. But, you know, it's that same thing, that this is just gonna be a bigger, bigger thing. I think the involvement we had on the bond process, we need to get high.
Yeah, it was a great process.
And all of those bond proposals were approved overwhelmingly.
Because of the education of the public.
And a lot of people thought maybe one or two would pass, but because I think it had the community buy-in and because we put in so much work and effort on that, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything that relates to Mr. Cole's presentation and/or moving forward?
I have one question. I like the numbers. I'm amazed that you had thirty-two-hundred people come out, I think you said for ten meetings, for education, input, et cetera. That's out of a city population of how much?
Pasadena was about a hundred or ten, a hundred and fifteen at the time.
Okay. That's excellent.
Yeah, and the secondary impact is that, you know, their spouse or their neighbor...
Yeah, and the secondary impact is that, you know, their spouse or their neighbor or the person that they, their barber or their customer. Yeah, and the funniest thing, I'm sure this never happened in Farmers Branch, but we got to the end of the process and we're having final hearings before we take, prove it, and there were some people that were unhappy about the outcome. And they, there was, so we had about thirty of them, for, you know, like online parcel kind of thing. And so a couple of the first speakers were from out of town. And they, and so they made the usual thing of, you know, this is the first time I've ever heard of this, and this is outrageous, and blah, blah, blah. And usually as the mayor, I would have to say, well, you know, we mailed you a notice and blah, 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 blah. And he was shouted down by the other dissenters, like, what, you live under a rock? You've never heard about this? Where you been? You could not escape the general plan in Pasadena, like it or not like it, it was just, it sort of was in the air. And our theme was imagine a greater city, right? That was our theme, was let's imagine a greater city, what would that look like and how can we achieve it? Can I give one, a little advertisement? We have an, the reason we're called the Congress is because we started with by having a gathering and we voted on our charter, so that's, so we call ourselves the Congress, and every year we have what we call a Congress, which is, you know, an opportunity for us to talk about what's happening in all the cities and to learn from each other. And it's coming up in March in Oklahoma City, so it's not far. And Oklahoma City's done a remarkable job in the last twenty-five years of investing. They used to, what they tell, what the local host committee says is, we used to compare ourselves to Tulsa, now we compare ourselves to Dallas, right? So we've come a long way because we invested in our community. And so we'll be telling the Oklahoma City story at that Congress as well. So I hope Mayor, you and some of the commissioners or, you know, some of the community or staff will be able to come and get two, three days of this and see what's going on and see what you can bring home that makes sense for Farmers Branch. That's March twenty-third through twenty-sixth. I want to thank you all, you've reaffirmed my affinity for Texas.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and jump back in. One eleven forty-four. We're going to go to, I guess, sort of put a taco, we're out of the RFP.
Thank you, Mayor. That was definitely the most toughest act to follow. So I actually don't have any presentation, I'm just going to talk. We are all very excited, as you could tell from the presentation and the follow-up discussion, the city is taking on a comprehensive plan update process. A little bit of backstory, and this is the only time I'll geek out on you, not on in a council meeting. When I first started working for Farmers Branch, and it was not just me, it was a brand-new experience for me to see a city with three comprehensive plans. I hadn't seen it anywhere before. There were pros and cons to it, it wasn't always all good or all bad. One thing I liked about it was, well, it kind of focused on the area that the long-range plan was recommending on, for example, the central area, which is our residential core has always been, it focused on those strategies. Our west side, at that time, two thousand and three, when the plan was adopted, was our largest chunk of real full land, and that's what the study looked at. Same for the east side, which is our most latest comprehensive plan adopted twenty-seventeen, it looked at our current industrial and commercial properties, looked at infill strategies and what, how we can revitalize that east side. However, somehow we felt that that connection between the three plans was lacking. When at city council and the city manager's office first started talking about the comprehensive plan, as Councilwoman Retana pointed out, well, two thousand and three west side plan, that's a slam dunk, it has to be updated. The reality on ground is so different than what the plan recommended. Right now, what staff struggles with is whenever we have a new application on west side, and I try to write a staff report, I have gone to my producer and said, I don't know how to recommend this because the study recommends something which is so old that it does not reflect the reality on ground. So west side plan has to be updated, there is no if or but on that. How about the central area plan and the east side plan? When you look at Farmers Branch, we are almost at a build-out stage, not totally, but we have fairly little greenfield left. So our focus for this study would be more about redevelopment, how to grow into the future, grow smart and grow sustainably, and still utilize our existing land, which is our biggest resource. What we sometimes fail to see, and this is also brought up by Mr. Cole very beautifully in his presentation, is as a municipality, our biggest resources are our people and our land. And most of our land is either private land, but the public land is in our streets. So how do we make that public and private connection? How do we make a place that can speak to its residents, to the visitors, the business owners, who are going to come and visit your city, who are going to live in your city, grow old in your city, and eventually their kids are going to graduate from school and want to come back? So this study that we are hoping to start as soon as possible, we sent a RFP out on December twentieth of last year, and we have targeted, we have emailed the RFP to select a group of consultants, and we have also posted it on our website as well as the American Planning Association website. The tentative schedule so far is we have given a deadline of January thirty-first for responses to come in. We have received some inquiries, which was exciting, that people are looking into our RFP and they will be submitting responses. There was one response in particular, which, or not response, one question in particular was so offbeat that I almost got scared and didn't even reply. It was one of our former planning directors, and he said, how about doing it in house? I was like, no, you're not, I don't think I can survive that. So we are really excited about this study where, when we went through planning school, comprehensive plans were taught to us as like the Bible for a municipality. Comprehensive plans are supposed to be that first big policy document where it does not only talk about land use, housing is to be a part of it, transportation is to be a part of it, parks and open space is to be a part of it, and that was, I graduated two thousand and seven, so it has been some time. But sometime after the five years or so, we started splitting them up. Transportation became its own thing, comprehensive plan started focusing only on land use, and housing somehow kind of got left out in some cases, or maybe barely touched on in comprehensive plan. Park and open space became its own plan, trail master plan became its own thing. So somehow that connection is missing, and that's what this study hopefully will try to put together. We are trying to make that connection that when your kid is trying to go to the gym or trying to go to some after our activity, they don't have to be driven to that location. That's what comprehensive is about, it's about choices. Choice is that one word, if nothing else, you take back from this meeting, take back choices, which is, does your kid have that choice? Does he have to monkey on all the arteries before he can get to a place where he wants to be? We experienced that last two years during COVID nineteen. I experienced that in my household. We were for a time shuttered in place, we couldn't go to work because places were shut down, and while walking from home, the benefit I saw is that for the first time, I was actually walking on those wider sidewalks and the trail networks within my neighborhood. And before that, we probably never used them, because eight to five, we were all at work, kids were at school, after school they came home, basically stayed in front of TV or on computer, that's about it. So that's what these plans, when I put that on paper, it starts from a policy direction and it gives recommendation that gets implemented through your zoning, your transportation, your park and open space planning, how many people are living here, how much open space do they need? Those all become part of this comprehensive plan. And also looking at our current plans, and not to totally throw them away, as Councilman Lynn talked about, it's not a total rewrite. So the goal of this study is to, yes, look very comprehensively on the west side plan because that's old, obsolete, but also pick up what's good of the central area plan of the east side plan. We recently did a parking update, we recently did an entertainment overlay, look at all those small plans and pick out what's best in it, don't throw them away. So that's the goal for this study, to bring back that cohesive form of a community, identify those visions and values, put them down, maybe print them and post them on all our offices, and then follow that, want the talk, that's what we heard. And hopefully by the end of eighteen month process, through thorough public engagement, we'll get there. That's what I have for you, and if you have any questions.
Yeah, just going through the schedule, responses in June, January thirty-first, you noted consultant selection and finalized scope by the end of February. I guess how soon are you going to bring those recommendations both to P and Z and into the council? I mean, seven, twenty-first? We need the first and fifteenth. So with enough time to vet it internally, vet it through P and Z, get a recommendation to bring to us, I think that timeline on scope and selection should probably move to March.
Probably, and just a little bit of inside information, which some of you in the group know, I will be out of pocket for two weeks in the beginning of March, so that's also how those deadlines, I tried to work it where things are kind of reviewed and we are ready with a group of shortlisted candidate in February and kind of start working on the scope before we bring them back to you, but that's a very good suggestion. We can push it to March if.
I was saying towards the back margin, it says, you know, council approval March first, so I was thinking, push it to the second meeting in March to just make sure we have enough time to thoroughly get through that, each group had time to look at it, and P and Z make their recommendations, and us consider those, we look to pick a group and move forward. I still think that still leaves, you know, enough time to work on initiation and stuff like that, starting in April, we go forward from there.
Yes, we can do that.
Does anyone have any issues with that plan of attack or anything else that should be brought up as we consider going through a selection of consultants?
I like that timeline also, just because, you know, we've got the two other offsite events for us, hopefully we'll all be doing to February, so I think it's better extending that a little bit where the charge of cramming is in Russia. I'm on board with that.
Yes, thank you so much.
No, I think we're excited about this, everything, great job to Zorita and Allison for everything, I love the revitalization plan for Valwood, I love that you're using a group that knows what they're doing, so the city's not having to make those hard decisions. And Bob the speaker was fantastic, so I think we're excited and ready to go.
I think this will help with our discussion next Wednesday, because these are things that we need to plan for in the budget as we allocate our funds for the consultants, we probably have, but thinking about additional funds for, we talked about in terms of community engagement, some of those other things are definitely points that need to be reiterated and discussed next week. But unless there's any other conversation, questions or discussion for the committee group, I would ask, Justice Manley, more, close this end.
Any comments? Saying that, I will close the planning zone portion at eleven fifty-five. And we will adjourn the city council portion because we need to get to eleven fifty-five.
Got you out of here before noon?
We're going to probably.
How many people in between eleven-thirty and noon for you to take on your way, or you may sit in the building park outside?